It's seven PM, I would like to cause meeting to order. Uh, the time, uh, the meeting is being recorded. For all in attendance.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jones, could you do the invocation, please?
Sure. Our eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much for this day. We bless you and we praise you. We honor and adore you because there is none like you. Father God, as we prepare to do the business of the city of Glen Arden, we ask you, Father, to give us wisdom, give us understanding. Bind up any spirits, Lord, that would cause us to have contention in this meeting. We thank you for your loving kindness and your tender mercies. Continue to bless the leadership of this city. Continue to bless the administration. Remember all of the inhabitants of this city, Lord, move by your spirit and meet every need that needs to be met. It is in Christ Jesus's name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Council clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Fareed. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Yeah.
Councilman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Council President, I have, um, something I wanted to bring up about the agenda.
Councilwoman Jones.
You're yielding to me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. Um, I'm looking at the resolution, R thirty-five twenty-three, the resolution to revise the rules for the, and regulations and fee schedule for the goal room and the community center at Woodmore. And I'm looking at the supporting documentation that was, that was, I'm assuming that was sent out on Saturday when we received it. And the supporting documentation that's with this led, resolution now is not the supporting documentation that I sent out on May ninth. On May ninth, when the, uh, citizen came to the podium and said that they could not read what was given concerning that resolution. I went back that night and pulled up everything that was supposed to be with it, made sure that it was legible. That it was, uh, for the citizens to read. I made two packets and set them in a vestibule for any citizens because I said that night, if they came up to the next day, that the packet would be ready. So I stayed until eleven o'clock that night and sent out a email at nine forty with the right documentation and all of the, uh, that was legible for everyone to see. I don't know what happened. I don't know if, um, I can say by, because I was, uh, when I was council president, I also had to be council clerk. So I understand attention and detail, especially when you're setting up the meeting. Unless you gave direction to the council clerk to take out the information that I sent. Uh, I wanted, at least, uh, the courtesy would have been to call me and say that we're not going to present that. But this is the information that I presented. And it was five different sheets and this is information that's in there. I don't know where this came from or who directed it for it to be in there. So, uh, the council has also received on May ninth, and I did send it twice to the council clerk on May ninth and May sixteenth. The original document that was sent on, uh, seven July one, twenty-twenty-two, also had what I sent, what I sent out and prepared for the council to look at. So it is in your email. Uh, I'm not sure, um, I don't want to, we postponed this resolution to have it discussion on tonight. I'm not sure if we can effectively, uh, discuss it with this, uh, uh, information, but I, and I don't want to postpone it again. I'm just saying that the documentation that it's, that was sent is incorrect.
Okay.
Thank you, Council President. And I would like a written explanation as to why what I put in there was not submitted and where this other information came from. Thank you.
So you're saying this, because I thought the only issue was that the font, uh, that some people couldn't read it. So it didn't change, did it?
Uh, that what was sent, what was, uh, yes, it did change. The, with the, uh, document on seven-one, twenty-twenty-two that we received from the then, uh, goal room coordinator was this information here, the final document after Mr. Kapinski. And that's what I sent on May ninth to make sure that you had all the right information, that we had the right information.
Yes. And that's not, okay, all right. We'll look into how it got switched.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilman Herring, I saw you unmute yourself.
Uh, I wanted to bring this up too, because I think, again, this is another document that needed to be set aside. And we need to have a special work session on this so we can go through this thing page by page and, um, address all the issues in here. There's no way in the world we're gonna be able to go through this tonight. Um, even if we had our correct documentation. Because again, um, we've always set aside separate meetings to go over that, go over those documents for the goal room because it's a lot involved. So I'm just thinking still we should be setting aside whether, you know, now, definitely should be doing it because we don't have a right documentation in front of us. But, um, well, a special work session on that. I mean, I'm really, I'm trying to get these twenty, thirty, forty, fifty page documents and then we sit here in a work session and try to go through this with everything else that we have to do when we should be setting separate meetings for all of this stuff. So that we get a clear understanding and, um, have good dialogue on whatever we're, uh, discussing. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. Uh, we, we've had this for quite some time. Um, you know, I, I understand your, your sub point of having a separate meeting, um, but for the documentation itself, we've had it for, for a while. Like, Councilwoman Jones?
We've had that documentation, I sent, I since, like I said, since July one of twenty-twenty-two, we've had this information. It's been sent out three times to the council. So, I mean, I've had opportunity to sit down and go through it.
Okay. Well, is there, is there a second to, uh, Councilman Harris's point to postpone the, um, this particular item on the agenda? Councilman Harris, I see you're unmuted. Did she want to say something?
Yeah, to say, I don't care how long we had it. Discussion hasn't been done on it by the, by the council as a, as a whole. That's what's not been done, is that you can give us a document and everybody could have, have different interpretations of what it's saying. We need to sit and get a clear understanding of what we're trying to do with this document. Because I'm telling you right now, I see prices in there that's going to price us right out of business. You know, so there's discussions that need to be had. I see something in there that says, this, even the council members can only use it for one event a year. So that means if we have an event, then we can only use it for one. I mean, there's stuff in there that needs to be discussed. I don't care how long we had it, has not come before the council and to be discussed in detail. You know, in this, in this situation, you know, I mean, there's even blacksmiths in here with no numbers in there at all. So I'm just saying, it needs to be discussed, it needs to be done in a, in a, in decency and order as is due to be stated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, here, once again, is there a second? Before we move on, Councilwoman Guillaume.
Um, I'm not voting right now, Council, um, President. I just had a comment that I've, I've been operating off of the hard copy that was given to me. So I don't even, so I do have some commentary based on the pages of the hard copy. So if we are to go through with this today, I just don't know how we, is there a suggestion or recommendation as to, and this is not me asking you, um, Council President, this is my, just putting it out there. To Councilwoman Jones or, or to the general, um, council, is there a suggestion as to how we are to go through with commentary that we have for the attachments? Again, mine is a hard copy. And it's seems to be different from what, um, Councilwoman Jones, you have sent to us, I mean, what you have sent to us. So I'm just trying to see recommendation. I'm fine with whatever. I just want to know what's the best usage of time.
Like I said, even when, I'm sorry, even, even when I, um, made the copies for the, um, uh, for the citizens to come up and get copies, though between five-nine and five-fifteen, those were removed. And I had to put them back out there and ask the council clerk and the, um, administrative aide to please not remove those because those were for citizens. Uh, the reasoning that I got, I was, I, I didn't understand what, so I just left it alone. Thinking that, you know, the document that we got on seven-one, the one that we received as a council on five-nine, and then received again on, uh, five-sixteen, um, would have, you have, this is what you would have gotten. I don't know where this other information came, like I said, came from. Because the documents that I prepared and sent out to the council are the same things that were submitted by the former, uh, uh, goal room coordinator as to, to update the, the, uh, guidelines for the goal room and for Woodmore Town Center. Yes, we do need to sit down and talk about it, but we've dragged for almost over, it'll be a year in July. And we still have not put in place guidelines for the goal room, a criteria as how the goal room will run. This is supposed to be our enterprise, this, uh, entity, then it needs criteria for people to understand what it is that we, uh, so, uh, what we support.
Okay.
And I just would not want to table this and then let it sit for another year.
All right. Um, so you still want to go through it tonight, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm not, uh, Councilwoman Guillaume, uh, does the paperwork you have look like this?
Um, let me, let me show you my screen for a second. Let me try to, I, I found the table of contents page if you have, but let me just show you the very first page of what I have.
Now, if you have small writing, if you have a small writing, then.
It's not small at all.
Okay.
But this is, this is, um, again, I don't, again, I don't think you'll be able to see, but this is like, you see this?
Okay, and the first page you have, can I see the first page?
Well, that's page one, but let me try to go to the table of contents page that you had. And I'll just show you how my table of contents page looks compared to your table of contents. So this is.
No, that's the incorrect, that's incorrect. That is incorrect. I don't, I don't know where they got that from to pass it out to you all, because that is not what I submitted to have, um, to, to be looked at. And if, like I said, if we all look at our, uh, uh, emails from seven-one, twenty-twenty-two, you'll see that that is not, uh, what that was submitted.
Okay. Well, how about this? We'll, we'll just for now leave it on the, on the, uh, agenda. And if we can't go through it, then we can talk about setting up a separate work session before the end of June for.
I would appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. All right. So let's, uh, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Guillaume.
I just wanted to know, since I, I know initially there was a motion with what Councilwoman Herring said, and then after that I said before I can vote, I had a question and then Councilwoman Jones, and I had dialogue, and then you just made a suggestion. So I just want to make sure that there's no motion right now.
There isn't. It, it's the regular, regular agenda. Uh, the compromise is that once we get to it, if you know, we can't, you know, fully discuss it the way council members, um, uh, find, uh, productive, then we could possibly table it with have another work session specifically on the, um, council goal room, I'm saying that council, the goal room rules before the end of June. All right. So with that, Council, uh, Council Clerk, could you, um, throw a call to accept the agenda, please?
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilman Herring.
No.
Councilman Herring, I didn't hear you.
You said no.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Jones.
I'm sorry, yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And Council President Curtis.
Yes.
Vote carries.
All right. Thank you. Moving to the first item on the agenda are the minutes from May first, uh, work session on May first, uh, closed session on May third, a public hearing on May ninth, a regular meeting on May fifteenth, public hearing on May twenty-second, and a special work session for the budget on May thirty-first. Should be a packet for, um, for your consumption, council members, uh, and we'll be voting on those in regular session, uh, later in the month. So Councilwoman Fareed. Oh, sorry. But you said something. Moving on to, uh, our next item is, uh, presentation from Red Speed Camera. Uh, um, it's about, did you want to do the, uh, introduction?
Uh, sure. Uh, the, uh, folks who are here are representing Red Speed are ready to make a presentation and they've been asked to keep it fairly short since you have a long agenda. And I'm assuming that the chief or deputy chief are here this evening and, uh, after the presentation, uh, uh, they're expecting to get your questions.
Okay, and, and.
It would be Mr. Super, uh, Bob Super and, uh, Mr. Erwin Lanier, who are here to make the presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Gentlemen.
Yep.
Floor's yours.
Thank you. And if I would, I would like to share my screen. Excellent. Did everyone see that? That, Sharon?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We will, um, so I'd like to start by introducing myself. Thank you, everyone, for allowing Red Speed to have a moment. Uh, during these busy times, I know that you have a long agenda and, uh, we will abide by a rather short, uh, but, uh, very comprehensive, um, um, presentation. I will be in the area this week. If there's nee, any need for one-on-one, um, questions that you may have, as well as we'll also allow for questioning after this, um, presentation. Uh, so to get started, my name is Erwin Lanier. Uh, I have been a, uh, spent more than forty years in Prince George County DMV area. I'm a retired Prince George County Police Officer, did a lot of federal investigative work. Uh, so I'm very familiar with the ongoings and the, and the atmosphere, uh, in Prince George County and in the city. So that's something that I'm very familiar with. Um, I would like to, uh, first commend all of you for making the city of Glen Arden, uh, a safer community by hopefully upgrading, uh, to Red Speed in regards to technology and customer service. I'm gonna go to the next screen. His next screen's gonna be regarding revenue, and I'd like, uh, Mr. Bob Super to jump in, uh, and give us a few minutes of, uh, explanation for this.
Oh, I think it'll be just about a minute. Erwin, can everybody hear me?
Great.
Good, okay. Um, my name is Bob Super. I'm a principal with Red Speed. Um, I, um, assembled the venture capital to start the organization back in two thousand and seven. Uh, and, uh, I've been with it, uh, since, um, uh, as a venture capitalist, I'm, um, an investor. I'm, I'm always concerned with, with figures. And, uh, Red Speed, uh, a few years back started assembling, uh, data for, um, uh, what's been reported to the state for, uh, speed monitoring enforcement. It's required to report gross revenues, vendor compensation, net revenues, what the vendor keeps, what the government keeps. And, uh, nobody's really tracked it until we started doing that. But when we did, we noticed that, um, when the numbers were produced year after year consistently, Red Speed returns the greatest share of, uh, revenues to the, to the local governments and the counties it represents. This is an example from twenty-twenty-one. It shows all the competitors' accounts on the left that report to the state um, for the year, and, uh, Red Speed is in the upper right corner for our accounts that reported for that year. And if you look at the bottom left corner, uh, bottom right corner of the, uh, competitors' accounts, you'll see the number twenty-nine point, uh, I think it's twenty-nine point eight-five there percent. That's what was retained by all of the competitors combined. And if you look on, uh, on our um, table in the upper right, you'll see in the right corner there, the Red Speed, uh, retained sixty-three point nine one percent for its customers in, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Underneath that, you'll see it's not an aberration that for all the Red Speed accounts historically from twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one to twenty-sixteen, we've averaged, uh, about sixty-two percent going back to the, the government. And that's, um, consistent. It's, 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 um, mathematically impossible not to have that sort or in that range of of distribution based on the way we're structured. And our structure is based on, according to how, uh, the, the work we produce um, and the, um, uh, funds that we collected, the, uh, uh, citations we print, the evidence packages we submit, each one of these elements, uh, contribute to fees for what we do as opposed to a flat fee which has, uh, problems. Uh, and, uh, most, uh, governments have a flat fee contract or some variation, some sort of hybrid of a flat fee or a fee that's upfront loaded to capture images, not necessarily, uh, producing in, uh, citations. So when, uh, when governments get into those, uh, structures of contract, contracts with their, with their vendor, they end up with disproportion with the vendor generally keeping either the larger share of the contract uh, or a, um, uh, a more balanced share of the contract, but a lot lower, uh, level of activity. Uh, through planned obsolescence is typically what happens because, um, equipment isn't updated, maintained, um, uh, software isn't, uh, replaced, um, and other such things. So you think of it like a, um, a computer that you had ten years ago. A lot of the systems, um, in, in Maryland were installed about ten years ago or even longer. And the same equipment is in place. And it doesn't alter channel to current technologies anymore than your old computer ten years ago would hold the candle to what you're using today. So our system always has us, uh, motivated, um, to upgrade and maintain the systems. Not only does it, is it the most accurate in terms of what's reported to the state, it's another element that's reported to the state is the, uh, number of five false violations. We're always the lowest, uh, in the state. And, uh, uh, we do that with the most economical, uh, package that's provided. Now, this is all for just the, um, for the traffic enforcement portion of it, and this specifically is for the speed enforcement of it because the red light activity isn't reported to the state. Um, so we know quite accurately from this, from the, um, speed component data that's been reported to, uh, the legislature through the, uh, I guess it would be the Maryland Police Training and Standards and, and Standards Commission, uh, that these results are, are proven to be the case. Um, beyond this, we also provide, uh, other options, uh, that are advanced technologies. Uh, so we do have someone else from Red Speed, uh, an affiliated entity with Red Speed on the, on the call with us. His name is Mario Hernandez. And if you, uh, want to learn about some of those technologies which involve uh, surveillance, advanced surveillance with artificial intelligence or, um, or gunshot detection, which is the finest in the nation, uh, in that category that we, that we, um, uh, produce and perform. Uh, Mario will be on here to answer those questions, but for now, I'll just turn it back to Erwin and, uh, you can proceed.
Wow, I appreciate it. Let's go to the next slide. And so basically, uh, to give you, in a nutshell, we're in automatic traffic enforcement. Uh, that's what we're looking at. Uh, we have the sharpest resolution with the best or the, or the most affordable, uh, technology. Right? When we check on with the red light enforcement, give you an idea, we cover seven lanes of enforcement. We use fourteen to sixteen foot poles for better capture. Uh, when you're dealing with speed enforcement, we use simply lane identification, uh, software that's, that's, uh, at the best or around the best as far as that's concerned. What, when you're dealing with video surveillance, uh, which I like a lot, it's we, we do an archive for forty-five days. We're up to forty-five days. The network archives, it really assists with ongoing criminal activity, uh, and investigation in which we've actually had a couple cases of those in the last two weeks. In which there was an assault, we were able to roll back, if you will, roll back that video archive and actually get the incident live, uh, which allowed, uh, the investigator to, um, pursue more criminal charges. And then, of course, with the L, LPR, uh, you get real-time updates. It's not next week or it doesn't upload at night and those types of things. So, um, that's kind of in a nutshell is, is a cover what we, uh, who we are in, in Red Speed. One of the best, or I feel like it's one of the best that, uh, 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 superior advantages is that we have HD full motion video enforced, uh, coverage. We are not photo enforced, if you will. Uh, and that full motion video enforces, again, lane specific. So I think that's, that's a, a great, uh, advantage that Red Speed covers. Please, if there's any questions, um, I just want to make sure that I adhere to my timing. I also have a four-minute video that I want, that we want to share um, as well, but please jump in with any, um, questions, if you will. And of course, at the end, we'll take questions. This is the short four-minute video. Uh, we'll take a look at it. I think you'll be impressed with, uh, what state of, state of the art enforcement that Red Speed, uh, provides.
No volume.
One second. You see that?
I think you're gonna have to go back to, uh, when you share your screen, there's a button that says share with, um, share with audio. So you're gonna have to stop sharing and then reshare. And when you reshare, it should be a button that says share with, uh, audio. Just click that button.
Absolutely. Perfect.
Red Speed USA is a proven leader in the automated photo enforcement industry. With a unique video-based system designed to maximize red light and speed violation capture and enhance public safety through its four-in-one platform. Red light enforcement. The Red Speed system supports up to seven lanes of enforcement with multiple lane-specific HD video cameras. In combination with 3D radar or in-ground sensors, Red Speed's system can capture multiple simultaneous speed and/or red light violations across all seven lanes of enforcement. Red Speed utilizes infrared illumination technology for night enforcement, eliminating the need for driver distracting white flash. Unique to the Red Speed system is the license plate rewind function. All competitor's systems produce two still frames for evidence packaging. Therefore, missing the violation in case the still images are unclear, illegible, or obscured by other vehicles. Red Speed's system allows for precise frame-by-frame extraction of license plate images by accessing archived video directly from the camera and rewinding or fast-forwarding until a clear license plate. and rewinding or fast forwarding until a clear license plate image emerges. This results in a documented twenty five percent increase in violation capture issuance. Video. The Redspeed system provides both real time video streaming and forty five day video archive access via any web enabled device, PC, smartphone, or tablet. Authorized users can access HD video from any of the overview and lane specific video camera streams. Define the time of interest and download the video clips directly on their device. No forms, no requests, no delay in waiting for a vendor to respond. Lane specific video cameras are zoomed in to provide clear identification of vehicle features. Color. Make. Model. And license plate images for all lanes of enforcement. Combination of overview video and lane specific video allows for crime investigators to not only trace a vehicle through the intersection, but also read its plate. Speed. Redspeed's speed camera technology uses 3D object tracking radar detection, an above ground, non invasive detection method with lane specific identification and speed triggers that record accurate speeds within plus or minus one mile per hour. The radar is powerful enough to simultaneously track up to three hundred and fifty objects in its field of view. In addition to issuing speed violations, comprehensive speed statistics are compiled by the system and can help clients determine if there is a need for additional enforcement. Accurate speed readings can also be used in evaluating and setting the threshold for right turn red light violations. The system performs a daily startup calibration check and will start enforcement only after all checks are passed successfully. Redspeed's speed cameras work in all weather conditions and can be configured to work simultaneously with red light enforcement, video surveillance, and automatic license plate recognition. License plate recognition. The license plate recognition module is a real time license plate identification system with a centralized plate archive across all LPR enabled cameras that works simultaneously with the red light and or speed enforcement system. LPR leverages existing camera photo enforcement hardware and scans all vehicle plates that pass by the lane specific video cameras field of view. LPR supports real time amber alert functionality with text or email notifications to individual or groups of authorized recipients. LPR can import existing state and federal hot lists, generate custom hot lists, and export plate archive databases to third party applications already in use by the customer.
Thank you for your for indulgence in that. And as it mentioned earlier, there's there's no flash required day or night. Again, in limited weather, we're very precise in regards to capturing the plate images. And we have multiple feed. We offer all medications with LSAG. Well, what is LSAG? LSAG is basically a company in which they they import comprehensive LPR data that helps crime fighting in regards to vehicle thefts and vehicle crimes and et cetera. So we're we're one of that's part of our partnership with them. And and then, of course, traffic. Traffic features, we offer a traffic reporting system to you. We also offer and create traffic reports using volume, traffic volume, average speeds, charts, et cetera. And then, of course, we have searchability which you can have make and model searches as well. And in closing, Redspeed dramatically is going to make make you safer through intersections, school zones, residential construction. We have the best technology that's affordable. And of course, beyond that, Redspeed takes control of permitting and licensing processes. And of course, there's no cost to you. It's why I later funded. And that would be the end of our initial presentation. If there's any questions that we could all discuss.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any questions from the council members, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Council President. So this is just for speed cameras? And for for surveillance? Correct?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the the video camera, the camera never turns off. So in this case, there's shared opportunities to surveil. Yes.
Okay, so now, once we get violators and traffic issues and we go to collect, do and and how do you assist? Or how does your company assist in collections or you don't?
Well, so what we do is that we obviously have the backroom support. And you guys are familiar with cameras, so I don't need to go into a ton of detail with that. But we also have select collection companies that we have a history with, that we actually forward information and help you collaborate with that. So it is a collection method.
Erwin, if I could, just to, I think I want to make sure you're answering the question she's asking. I believe she may be asking whether we collect the citations off the bat. And the answer to that is yes. If this is full service, full service operation, basically, we get authorized to place the cameras, we operate the cameras. We we get the approvals from the police on which citations are our valid citations, which ones they want. They'll toss out any if they want any removed. They return to us the list of approved citations that we print. We mail. And then the payments of those come into our lockbox, which is audited regularly. And then we perform our accounting each month. And we sweep the account, retain our fee, and send the balance to the municipality. Then beyond that, what Erwin was describing was collection efforts for any non payments. If that's if the community dealt with that, we do have a vendor and a relationship that we think is reliable and we think they're they're among all of the relationships we've tried over the years are the strongest in collections.
So with the collections, does any company, whereas with when we have the license plate information and the registration information, does it go back to the state and they flag it some kind of way? So that if they still do not, if they're still non payment status, if they come back to get a new tags for a vehicle or something, will we be able to collect that way also?
Erwin?
Yes, absolutely. The state of Maryland allows a flagging process in regards to the tags. So ultimately, however, if it's every two years, and when that's due, they're going to have to be flagged. You have to pay their fees to get it to get the flag removed. Yes, ma'am.
So is that done through your company or done through the vendor that you use?
That's done through us for flagging. Yes, we actually facilitate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members?
Yes, Councilman, Council President.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, could you go back to slide two?
That's two.
That's three.
Yeah, but one back here. I think you want to see the chart.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
Because I was looking at the chart and I'm looking at what we were making. Where we collected our gross revenue was what fifty nine thousand under who we currently have?
That was for twenty twenty one.
Okay, and it's like a sixty one thirty split?
Well, it says it's thirty eight went to the vendor, but then there was additional costs that were incurred that the municipality reported. That's another thing that when Redspeed performs the services, there are no additional costs. We do everything other than the amount of time it takes for a police administrator to review the citations. All other work is and costs are absorbed by Redspeed. So after the vendor and the costs, which I didn't include the cost portions in this that factor in, the municipality retains sixty one point nine seven in twenty twenty one. Now, that is the highest number that the municipality reported among the six years prior to that. I was looking at the numbers before the call and in twenty twenty, municipality retained fifty two point eight three. In twenty nineteen, it was forty four point oh one. In eighteen, it was forty seven point three four. And in seventeen, it was forty six point six three. And in sixteen, it was thirty two percent. And averaging all those, all that period of time, including twenty twenty one, the municipality retained a total of one hundred and fifty five thousand seven eighty out of the three hundred and sixty six thousand collected. And that resulted in forty two point five percent retention of revenues according to what was reported in the state.
And the fluctuation in those various amounts is due to what? The service charges from the vendor or?
Well, it's it's a lot of it has to do with timing with with your cases. And I don't know the structure. I didn't look at the structure of Glenn Arden's contract. We probably could have accessed that through public information. We just didn't do that. But the first thing is that you, what's more important is, especially at the lower volume levels, is to look at a number of years rather than a single year. Because when you're doing sixty thousand, you look above it, Gates of Urden did nearly two million, you know, Greenbelt did three hundred thousand. So Glenn Arden is doing a lower volume of activity than than almost everybody in the state that has these programs. There's with only a couple of programs to do lower volumes in Glenn Arden. And that that means that when sometimes with tickets are issued and then they're collected, there might have been a large number that was collected in December that rolled over into a January or if the fiscal year ends in June to July, where it rolls over and you know, that'll affect the percentage for that one particular year to make it seem higher or lower on these rates. That that works away from everybody, but it's it's more exaggerated with the smaller volume of activity Glenn Arden has.
Okay, because again, I mean, it I mean, you can have all the technology in the world, but once people know where the cameras are, they know where the cameras are. They slow down to twenty five to get past the cams and they pick up and do forty up the hill. Everybody knows where the cameras are. The cameras haven't moved. Are these cameras going to be? Are your cameras going to be stationary?
They're fixed.
They're fixed, fixed, and they're mobile.
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay. All right, because I was looking at Snow Hill and they got like the same percentage that we have. And you say that's your that's one of your accounts. But that's for that's for the same time period or?
Yeah, that's for the same. That's for the year twenty twenty one. That's correct.
This percentage split is about the same as what we have right now.
Yeah, it's it's roughly the same for that one for that one account. And again, these these fluctuate from year to year and go back and you can see other years reflect. Snow Hill did a little bit better in the percentage, a little bit less in percentage. But generally speaking, as you can look at those numbers, we're always above sixty percent. And we average sixty two percent over that period of time going to municipalities with no other expenses going to the municipality. So it's a reliable, it's it's a consistent performance record. The other thing too is that I don't know about with Glenn Arden, but with a number of other communities that we've taken over. By the way, we're the fastest growing in the state. We've we operate over twenty municipalities now and we continue to grow. And one of the reasons for that is that in addition to the stability that we have that we provide in the economies. The other thing is that we are always restructured to increase the volume of captures. We're we try to aim to be at the cutting edge of improving public safety by capturing as many violators as as we can. And normally, when we come in and bring in our new technologies and we upgrade our new technologies, both the softwares and the the high resolution cameras and all things related to it, the adjustments and modifications you make to them, we're going to capture more violations. So that also increases the net revenues. The net result is to increase net proceeds to municipalities as a result of the of the higher level of attention we provide. So our intention would be to make sure that we are, first of all, improving the equipment so you're going to capture more violations and improve on that number. But secondly, we're going to try and take advantage of if the town is interested in doing, the city is interested in doing this. The new ordinances that are in place, new ordinances in place for residential zones.
Okay. All right, because yeah, I mean, I mean, and I guess one of the issues that we've been having in the city is is seven oh four where we the state, it's like the penalty trying to get the state to allow so you can put a camera on seven oh four. And we do have a school right there. Not too far from our intersection on seven oh four and Glenon Parkway. So would y'all assist with that?
Absolutely. I think, Erwin, you're pretty familiar with that location, aren't you?
I am. I'm very familiar with that location and and we would assist with that. We do all the the legwork. We just completed some of that same spectrum of work with district heights. While we have to visit whatever I need to do, right? Whatever, whatever it takes to get the attention of those decision makers to make sure that that we could get things approved. Then that's one of the caveats that I think creates a better customer service from Redspeed. I'd like to also address, Mr. Harry, that you had mentioned in regards to people speeding and once they see the camera, they're going to slow down. Historically, you're absolutely correct, particularly locals, which I think is a benefit to the community as the locals understand whether speed whether speed monitoring devices are. That that creates a safer community. What's mostly important is that the percentages range seventy eighty percent of of those captured actually are not from the community, which I think bodes well for 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 Glenn Arden to say that, you know, we're not that community. We understand. We'll we'll make sure we take care of our own. We were not going to allow people to come through and consider this a speeding zone.
Okay, one other question. What power source are you using? You going to tap into the local electricity or what?
General, yes. Yeah, direct power.
Direct power? Okay.
Yeah, and we we've we've established a pretty good relationship with the local power companies. They know who we are and and how efficient that we are trying to make the process. So we have a little bit more buy in from them as we've been able to assume a few or actually a lot of I guess municipalities in Prince George County.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council members? Okay, so I have a few follow ups. As it relates to district heights, how long did it take Redspeed to get that up and running with working with the state?
We've been our standard because we like to make sure that our transparency is is very important and rather have I'd rather under promise in that regard set of over promising, but it's been a hundred and twenty days, a hundred and fifty days as a standard for getting to maneuver through the permitting, as you can imagine, permitting process, engineering, getting those back from county and statewide. So that's the that's the barometer that we we generally use. Of course, we don't have much control, as you can imagine, dealing with those entities, but we do our best to make sure that we, the relationship that we've established, that we tag along with that to get the attention that's needed, move everything forward.
If I could, one other thing, if I could just add one thing to that, because I'm not sure. I think we there's there are speed cameras in place there, correct? In Glenn Arden? Or are there are there speed units in place in Glenn Arden? I can't recall.
There's one, I believe.
Yeah, we have two. Two speed cameras. That's what I thought. So in those cases, what, just to try and minimize downtime, we have temporary units that we might be able to deploy. So first of all, the the transition time is a bit reduced because you're going to the just looking for a change of an additional permit, just to change the name under a permit that's been approved. But depending on what we retained from that unit location, you know, in the way of infrastructure that might be there. But depending on what we retained from that unit, location, you know, in the way of infrastructure that might be there. It would make it a very rapid transition like we just did in Forest Heights. That went very smoothly and quickly because we went on the existing positions and just replaced with better technologies. If we had not had that sort of cooperation in order to do that. We would have, the alternative plan would have been for us to put temporary boxes in place. To continue operations. While we were going through the approval process with the municipality. To. To install the permanent locations and then that would be on, on the time, timeframe of the timeline that Erwin described. One other thing is in applying for county permits for new locations on county, county roads. There is a sixty day review time. That the county. Is entitled to, the county police to review and, and agree with or object to. These applications. Generally speaking, they have not, they've chosen not to get involved. But we still have to wait the sixty days and once the sixty days over is considered a. Facto approval. And then the process can proceed from there. So sometimes on a county location. For residential zone activity, which are twenty four by seven cameras. Those can take, you have to factor an additional sixty days for that.
Okay, thank you. You, another, in the presentation said this is self-funded. Does that include equipment?
Yes, yes.
And how long is the relationship? I take it that is a, as a contract that we have to sign or? You know, how long is the relationship between Red Speed and the city of Glenn Arden?
Typically, we propose a five-year contract. The contracts are terminatable on sixty days' notice. And we will return the. The facilities to the location, the condition we found them when if the, if the municipality prefers that.
Okay, and the maintenance of the cameras, you, do you guys do routine maintenance? Okay, and last question is the, I'm still fuzzy on the ratio of. Is there a fixed ratio that Red Speed gets and? I mean. How does that work? Because I was still a little bit fuzzy on.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tackle this. What Red, Red Speed. Proposes and all of our contracts, we don't have a contract that's not set up on this, this, this structure for speed because it's very popular. We do, we would do a flat fee if a municipality wants to, it just, nobody's. That we've talked to as a client sees the sensibility of that. They prefer. The task oriented structure that we propose. And that's, that's based on completion of certain levels of work along the way. So. The, the, the first level of activity is the, the evidence package, package, capturing the images. And just capturing those is ninety nine cents per unit for everyone that we capture. Okay? And then we. Put that in the form of a, of an evidence package. And we submit that to the police and the police come back and approve it. And then there's a, a separate fee for. For processing the. The citation to create it, the printing of the citation. And the mailing of the citation. Okay, all of that, there's a separate fee to that. Okay, and that's been proposed in our, you'll see that in the proposal we submitted. Then. Once that citation comes back to us in the form of a payment. We get a separate fee for processing that payment, all the accounting related to it. And putting that to bed. And then also the archiving. So archiving, as you know, is a, a data service that consumes a lot of space and has, and time. The longer you have it, the more expensive it is. So we have an archiving portion that's paid for too. So it typically runs about, when you add it all up, about fourteen ninety nine or thirteen ninety nine. Somewhere thirteen, fourteen bucks to fifteen dollars per, per citation. If that's a fully collected citation. Now, not every citation that comes in is, is fully collected, so the portions of those fees. Are charged according to the amount of work that's completed.
All right, thank you. All right, Chief Bryant, final word for you, uh, to you? To Bryant?
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Red Speed, for your presentation. I was in training when you guys actually came through and did a tour with my lieutenant. And we were speaking of security cameras. We have security cameras in our building and stuff. And from my understanding from my lieutenant. Your company took a look at the cameras that we already have and they're saying that they're, those cameras will be usable. And they can just add additional cameras and get a mainframe to actually use the cameras in a setup that we already have in place. And also, we can have surveillance at certain locations in the city of Glenn Arden. So could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, I'll start first thing before I hand it off to the guy that really knows this. That's Mario who's on the line with us, but. I can, I can start by saying that that's one of the, the real advantages we have over every competitor that's out there in the country right now. Is the amount of technology we can integrate from our platform with speed and red light cameras in a violate or funded fashion. And one of those is, is surveillance. And we can use not only our positions for surveillance, whether it be a red light or a speed light camera, to enhance whatever. Visibility, the, the law enforcement, the police department wants to have in the community. But in addition to that, and we, you saw the examples in the video there of, of how that regular surveillance is used on our cameras. In addition that we have an AI capacity, artificial intelligence capacity to expand upon that. You offer greater resolution, zoom capacities, to identify certain features you're looking for. And most importantly, it integrates with. The municipality's existing surveillance systems. So you have one central point, not only for, for whatever this, the city is. Is analyzing and assessing and viewing from the road that we provide, but also in buildings or in other parts of town. And in that case, when there's already existing cameras in place, it becomes very economical. Because we can, we don't, we don't have to deploy anything there. We just reuse that, that, those locations and integrate them to what we're doing. Now Mario is, is the one that actually runs that program for us in, in Maryland. So Mario, you can take it from there.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, Chief Bryant and all those in attendance. Yeah, I just, to cover what I did and took a look at. For Town Hall and for the. Housing Authority, specifically with the Town Hall, I took a look at the existing cameras that you have. In fact, and in my conversation with Lieutenant Robinson. We were discussing access, deliverability of, you know, access to the database of all of, you know, video recordings and things like that. I found that the best alternative or the best way to move forward. To bring this program and your, your, your system up to date and make it a, a usable. Functional piece of equipment was to update your DVRs, which is a digital video recorders. And expand its capability. And we can reuse a number of the existing cameras. The best way I felt was to go in there. Replace the DVRs and network them so that you can access them from any place on the network. As long as you have the correct credentials. And then determine which cameras that you are, are, that you currently have are operational, that are recording in a manner that you like. And find the dead zones that you wanted to increase your camera and your viewing capability. And then add those in a second phase. So the first phase would be to. Add the new DVRs and network together. And that way, everybody has access, everybody you wish to have access to that. Will be able to get into it remotely. And then from that. We can determine exactly the new locations. I know there were some in the Gold Room, I believe. And some other areas that we discussed that you wanted to add cameras, we could take a look at that more closely. And add that to. Any cameras that you currently have that are down. So first phase. Network everything so you can see everything. The second phase is to go in and add the new cameras and make any replacements that you want.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. So. I, I take it that'll be a separate proposal, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, actually. That's kind of a yes and a no, depending on the contract they sign, they would, they would sign with Red Speed. But I want to be presumptuous, but. A number of our contracts, most, almost all of them, including the Brentwood contract, which a number of municipalities are. Have been taking advantage to piggyback off of. City of Brentwood's contract. Either that contract or other, we've been signing, signing lately. Have an option, obviously optional features. So they, that way it's easier to have them violate or fund it if you want to proceed with them. When they're within the Red Speed contract. You've got the speed compensation, you've got the red light compensation, all the, all, everything related to those in, in the. Compensation exhibit, or I should say the. Addendum that's attached, appendix. And then beyond that, you'll see a section for optional features and it'll show artificial intelligence, the AVA, Advanced Video Analytics. And the compensation for that. And then the. Gunshot technologies are in there as well too, because they also integrate very well. And that's very popular because of what it does for schools and. Public buildings and other things to integrate the video with the gunshot detection. So when an event occurs. The law enforcement has a tremendous advantage to not only respond quickly and very accurately to this, the, this event. But also to have the visibility of what's going on inside and outside of the building. So. Anyway, we structure it that way and that doesn't mean that the municipality has to move forward with those features. But they have the option to do with, move forward with those. It's already built into the contract. We could also do a separate contract as well.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for coming to make this presentation. And Mr. Lanyard?
Lanyard, yeah.
Lanyard, yeah. Thank you for making yourself available to us in the coming week. You say you're going to be around for about a week?
Okay, I'll be in, I'll be in this week as well. We have a local office. If I can maybe email, he'll email you if you have some secondary questions and come through tomorrow or Wednesday is fine.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Next up is the presentation by Tom Himmler for the ARCA Program Guidelines for, for the Council Review and Approval. Mr. Himmler, are you on the line?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Curtis. It's good to see you all again. Want to. Quickly just explain my book for a second. So, so nobody's offended. I, I recently had. Cancer surgery on my head last week, so that's why I'm covered with a wrap, because I, I recently decided done, so. Don't, you know, just to make sure I don't want to offend anybody by wearing a wrap on my head, but that's, that's the reason why, so.
No worries, Mr. Himmler, and pray for, you know, speedy recovery from my surgery.
Thank you. So. Well, we'll try to be stealth since we have five of these programs to, to walk through. And we'll, if I can share a screen, I'll, I'll hit the highlights of each of them if that's, 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 that is. And then answer questions for each of them and then move on to the next one.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. So the first one's the Community Resilience Hardship Fund. And you see that on the screen. Now. As you recall, this one was set up through Resolution twelve, two thousand twenty-three, had a hundred thousand dollars allocated. This is the one for small business and community-based nonprofits. So this is a draft guidelines and application. Just want to hit a few of the highlights. As part of this, I do want to give thanks to Ms. Guillaume and Ms. Abada and the. Council Clerk for their input is, in this process as well. So just under the eligibility, obviously, the entity. Needs to be located within the city's legal boundaries with. With one exception and. Which was to. In particular, as it relates to nonprofit organizations, it's our understanding that. There's a few that may have special status to use the Gold Room and. They used to be physically located within the city, but they, they do, do not, are not located within the city now, but they continue to provide services to city residents. The entities need to be operating as of the date of the application, so this is not designed for businesses who have closed. And, and due to COVID, you have to be operating both prior to COVID, which is the March fifteenth, twenty twenty date. And also actively operating as of the date of their application. Again, they need to have a show. They're demonstrating negative economic harm due to COVID. And in particular, you'll see in the, in the requested documents. Does financial information in particular relate to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and twenty one, basically? Because in our experience, it's an easy way to show whether or not there's a, a negative impact by looking at those three years specifically. For nonprofits, they need to be established five oh one C threes. And have received a final determination letter from the IRS. The entities must be in good standing with the state and then the city. For example, if, if a business applies, but they. Are not in good standing with the state or haven't, they're not good standing with the city, i.e. they may have taxes or something like that, that will be a flag. So they may be current on those, all those things. We have a list of businesses that are ineligible by kind of category and you see those listed, so. Fapes, e-cigarette, those type of age restricted businesses would not be eligible, hotels, motels. National regional chains, gas stations, hospitals, banks, trust and loans, those are the, the core set. Businesses that would not be eligible. Amount of assistance is again a hundred thousand. Why highlighted the, the, the maximum amount to get input from the, the council? Given the number of businesses and the amount of money, probably five thousand or twenty five hundred is probably a more suitable number. Because if, if you did up to ten, you know, that's only ten businesses and or nonprofits. Potentially. So that's one point of guidance, you know, we like to, to, to get from the, the council as to what, what's the maximum amount that somebody would be, be eligible for. And again, you have to show harm. So if somebody shows harm, but they only show harm or three thousand dollars, for example, that's the three thousand dollars with, what is the amount that they would receive? So it's not a blanket. Everybody gets ten thousand. You have to, you have to show harm. Of that amount. This one's set up to, for applications to be submitted hard copy, but we can work with Ms. Abada and, and staff to do this electronically, if, if you like as well, or to do it both ways. Some of our clients have done it both ways, so where they could apply online and then our company gets, gets fed the information. The application itself is pretty straightforward, just, you know, as you, as you see, that to have a negative economic impact, select the box, the appropriate box and boxes. We do have a question because going back and looking at the previous discussion on Resolution twelve. Is that if a business received or nonprofit received additional prior COVID relief funds, they need to disclose that. The, the amount, the date and the funds boarded. And then that will get factored into the equation to see if there's still an unmet need. Financial information I kind of talked about, it's basically getting three years' worth of financial information for nonprofits, it's nine nineties. Or. Nine ninety ends and it's a really, really small, they, they need to provide your financial information statements for those three years. Small businesses, kind of same thing, it's your, your federal. Federal returns. And one thing we expect is a lot of these businesses will probably be Schedule Cs filers, which means. They're, you know, individual taxpayers, but they also haven't, they run a business and they report it as their income as individuals. So we expect to see a lot of Schedule Cs. Filings for the small business side. And you'll see this on almost everything. It's basically them attesting to. The information's accurate and they're also agreeing that their information may be shared. maybe shared with the U.S. Department of Treasury, since the U.S. Treasury can, can come in and audit these funds and, and, and all these programs. So that in a quick nutshell is the community resilience program. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from council members?
And if no questions, at least guidance on the, the maximum amount that you're comfortable with.
Um, Mr. President, I do have a question.
Awesome, and here?
Yeah, let me ask a question, so what? What is going to be put in place to avoid fraud?
Well, one, it's, it's these, the, the documents, you know, they, they, these are federal returns, complete federal returns, filings with the IRS, though that, 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 that in particular is, is one, is ways of ensuring that. Or, um, uh, that, that's the primary way. And that's just how these programs are, I mean, we're not, most of these programs focused on going and audit, on, audit an applicant during the process. But there's usually a little bit of back and forth between, um, uh, us as administrators and the applicants, if we have questions about anything, we will ask for additional documentation.
So do we, we don't have some sort of proof of usage?
Proof of usage, what do you mean?
Yeah, that they actually use the funds, what they say they were going to use them for?
Well, they're not, remember, this is for them, negative economic harm, so this is basically going back prior to twen- to basically twenty twenty, twenty-one, and say, for example, a, a business, right, a coffee shop or whatever, in twenty nineteen, they made a hundred, they, they had sales of a hundred thousand dollars, but during COVID, they had, they went down to twenty thousand, right? In twenty or twenty-one, therefore, that's a clear negative economic impact from COVID, right? So that's why we want to kind of get a pre-COVID baseline, and then the two COVID years to, to, to validate whether or not there's true economic harm. And the way of doing that is looking at their federal returns that they filed to, to, to the federal government, uh, and, and those three years.
Okay. So they'll submit, they'll submit their federal tax returns, and we're supposed to? Okay.
Yeah, we'll review all those, and again, if we have questions about it or something's not adding up, you know, we, we, we've done this before in other, with other clients, we'll ask questions and follow up. And if, if, if we feel uncomfortable with an applicant, we'll flag it and, and discuss options with city staff.
Yeah, and I guess it's just with the, um, with the, the, the council members, uh, with this, also with this, I really am. Me as a council member, I'm tired of seeing organizations being cherry picked for pro- for programs, because two organizations does exempt from something, our organization's one that are not even in the city, and two, they're getting way more than other organizations that are, that are in the city, but that's another story in it, in and of itself, so. All right, that's all.
As it relates to the businesses, the businesses need to be within the city. So if somebody applies outside the city limits, they're going to be deemed ineligible. If, if they're not in good standing, for example, if we go into Sstat, the State Department of Assessments and Taxation, and the business is not registered and, and current and good standing with, with them, that's going to be a flag, and they're going to have to address. In most cases, it's the fact that they have not submitted their required reports to the state. Um, and so we'll flag that, and if they, they address that issue and come back in a good standing, if funds are available, then we would finish processing the application.
Now, I've done my nonprofits, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, nonprofits, they, you know, other than that one exception, that special kind of status, the rest have to be physically located within the city. So you can't get a nonprofit that's in, you know, Upper Marlboro or whatever, and say, hey, we provide X, Y, Z services countywide, and a certain percentage of our residents, we serve, offer services to your residents, that that entity would not qualify unless they were given that special status already.
Thank you. Are there any other, uh, council member, um, questions on this particular? Uh, Councilman Gill?
Thank you, Council President, um, and I also, I would like to say thank you to Tom and also, um, extend my prayers for you at this time. I, um, I thank Councilman Herring for his questions, and I want to say that one of the main reasons, um, to your point, Councilman Herring, about, um, making sure that we don't, we at least try to alleviate any type of fraudulent activity is um, us trying to get not one but three years' worth of tax returns, so knowing that Tom has done this in the past, has, um, made me feel more assured, so thank you for that, that was one of the things that I too was initially thinking of. What I do want to go back to is something that Tom mentioned, is there, we need to decide on an amount. Right now, you, um, if you saw what Tom had, it was highlighted, it, um, the ten thousand was highlighted. What we did figure out was there are, and, and Ms. Abada, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there were a hundred and one, I believe, uh, businesses or on the business license roll or something like that, and let's keep in mind that sixty-seven, at least sixty-seven of those are at Woodmore Town Center, so that those don't apply. Then there's also the, but there are also gas stations, there are the tobacco stores and all those things that are not, that are also part of all those things. So knowing what we know, I do feel that ten thousand, I wish we could give ten thousand, but knowing that we only have a hundred thousand dollars set aside for this particular legislation, what would be a reasonable amount for us as a council to approve for, um, the city to provide? That's what I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of. Thank you.
Awesome, Gill, are, are you asking that we decide that right now?
Um, I, I'm not sure when else we would be able to decide it, because I know that when we come again, it'll be public and the public hearing and votes and stuff, I think.
Okay, I mean, I would, I would recommend, uh, splitting it in half to five thousand, I mean, a hundred thousand's not a lot. Uh, I think you, if you cut it below that, I don't know how beneficial be to small businesses beyond, uh, below five thousand dollars, but at least you'll be able to, um, double the, uh, hopefully, if, you know, let's say that everyone is able to show five thousand dollars worth of loss, able to help double amount of people as opposed to, um, you know, just ten people if, if that were the, you know, the case, so that would be my recommendation. I think anything below that, uh, wouldn't be. You know, um, I'll just keep there.
I'm, I'm with you, I think that's one of the reasons, and I don't want to speak for Tom and Bevan, others, when we were behind the scenes, but when we did finally get to the, the number of businesses and didn't take it, I later on took account what were considered businesses. I agreed with what the amount that you fell on, Councilman, Council President, because we didn't want to go between twenty-five hundred and five thousand, five thousand was more realistic for me, but, thank you.
Any other council members want to weigh in on the amount before we just?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Hare?
Yeah, so did you say it's about, so it's about forty businesses in Glenard that may be, they may qualify for this Councilwoman Gill?
Less than forty.
Less than forty.
I just, I just, yeah, I said, I said sixty-seven off the top one at my last count, were at Woodmore Town Center.
Out of a hundred and one?
Right. And so there's, but then there's also the other ones that, well, you know, the, the tobacco stores that are not part of that sixty-seven there, you know, all those other businesses, and then if we, well, I'll just answer your question, yes, that part, yes.
Yes, I agree with, um, with you and Council President, and five thousand would be, it'd be more beneficial, and I think it's spread a little further.
Okay, any opposite, uh, Council, Vice President Ferguson?
I just wanted to say that, okay, with the five thousand also.
Okay, any opposition to the five thousand? Okay, uh, by unanimous consent, we can go with the five thousand for, uh, this one, Councilman Gill and Mr. Himmler.
All right, thank you for your direction, appreciate it. Uh, next one's the Good Samaritan, um.
Yeah, can I just interject for a second? Um, it, it might be in Councilman Gill, I know, for all the ones for individual council members who are sponsoring the various ones, you can, you know, interject if you like. Given that we were given these ahead of time, and we've read through them, uh, would our time be best be served just to ask our questions on each one, as opposed to going through what we've already read?
I am.
Any opposition to that? Councilman Gill?
I have no opposition at all, Council President, I just wanted to make one quick statement that the Housing Authority, the Glenardian Housing Authority one, I did not provide any feedback on, because I knew that it was myself and Councilman Herring and Councilman Hairston who sponsored that, so just wanted to put that out there. But as far as the Good Samaritan Hardship Fund, the Intergenerational Poverty Fund, and the one that we just discussed, the Community Resilience, I, um, had input in that.
Okay, thank you, and I completely will defer to the, the sponsors of the different agreements, but I just think that time be, uh, well spent asking questions since we've already gone through it, so one open questions to the, uh, Good Samaritan Hardship Fund and how they'll set up. Any, any questions for Mr. Himmler, uh, and, uh, Councilman Gill and other sponsorships by the council? Okay, here none?
Thank you.
That's a day I did, I mean.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, Councilman Hare.
Sorry, no, I was too slow on the draw, um, trying to hit that unmute, um. So let me just ask on average about how many families will this, will this, uh, program help, do we know, Councilman Gill? With the three hundred thousand dollars?
Tom had, Tom had did a metric, Tom, you wouldn't happen to have that, would you?
I, I have that, but I think, I mean, I could talk about how we came up with, we think between probably a hundred and a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty, Mr. Herring. And, and, and how we looked at this, we looked at, uh, census data, and we did this similarly for, um, Culmer Manor and District Heights are two other programs we did. Uh, and so looking at that data, and looking at the household size, your household income, the number of households by bedroom, we think we're going to be in that hundred to a hundred and twenty range, and then today is now, your, 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 your households are a little different than some, some of the other ones we have implemented, because overall, your household income is ninety-one thousand, uh, almost ninety-two thousand dollars, so you have sizable pockets of households that have pretty good-sized income that won't be, meet the, uh, moderate income thresholds that you see in the, in the guidelines. But we think you're probably going to have more one and two-bedroom, one and, one and two-person household, probably a little bit of three, and then the anomaly in yours seems to be the higher, the larger the size of household, the lower your income seem to be, uh, we've seen that in the data, so it won't surprise us if you get a little more five or six household, person households that would be eligible, uh, even though your incomes are higher, but we've seen some things in your data that once they got up there in household size, their incomes actually went down from like what you would normally think. Uh, in general, we think you'll probably be somewhere, and we'll get, and we'll spit out this different data for you as we go through it, as we did in other clients, but on average, we think you're probably going to be close to the equivalent of probably a two-point-six to two-point-seven household size on average of ones that are awarded, and that's slightly below, because right now you're about two-point-nine-two, two-point-nine-three, your average household size. Uh, so we think in that range, to answer your question, uh, based on the thresholds we have.
You'll come, you'll be screening the applications?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll screen, we'll do all that, yes, we'll, we'll screen that, we'll process recommendations more likely once they get started on a weekly basis to Ms. Abada and Mr. Stewart for processing of checks. So we'll handle all the reviews, the outreach on questions and follow-up. One thing we ask of, of everybody collectively is once these go live, to, to use your resources, your access to put it out to the community to make sure that they know these programs, um, but we'll handle the review of the applications, the calling, the, the making recommendations to Ms. Abada and, and, and their team, and we'll have draft letters, both rejection and award, depending on what the situation is. And then that way the city just suddenly has to handle the processing part of the, the letters and the checks, uh, to the, to the recipients.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hare, uh, Councilman Gill, is that a new hand, or?
Yes, it is, Council President, I just want to say, um, that, and, and Tom can speak to this as the city manager can as well, the majority, no, the legislations that, that have been brought forth by me, I don't even qualify for. And it's important for me to state that, because there are a huge amount of folks and families and households who have been impacted. And not to say that those who are higher earning have not been impacted, but there are other additional resources for them. But it was important for us to move this one in particular, want to move everything forward, but to move this one in particular forward because of the impact of the low-income, no-income earning families in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gill, Councilwoman Farid.
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Himmler, and wishing you a speedy recovery. Um, I just wanted to question the, why the Stormwater Management Rebate um, grant program wasn't on here, I know we had discussed that, and I was expecting to see it here, but I wasn't sure what the rationale was.
I mean, I think these are ones that hadn't been launched before, the Stormwater Program, the BNP one had already been an active application and, and launched, so that was, that was, that was why.
Okay, I think it would be, um, why, especially this is more for Ms. Abada, to put that out again, because when, when that program was launched shortly thereafter, our city manager left, and so I'm not sure that, um, there were, was really anybody to mend the process as, and originally anticipated with that program. And as far as, um, I could tell from the budget that we have, that all of the funds that had been allocated to that grant program are still available.
Right, and that was one, too, there was an issue legislatively, because the resolution was very specific, if I recall, Ms. Abada, that, um, um, had the specific dates for windows of applications and everything else, Ms. Farid. So that will actually need to get updated to, to do that, because it was very, very specific. Uh, because it was really designed to be launched and done last fall. So there's some dates in there, the resolution is probably needs to get refreshed to, to allow for the actual continuation of the program.
Right, thank you, and I, and Ms. Abada, I would seek your guidance on that, because the previous guidance that I had been given was that it was fine, that we didn't need to amend the resolution, um, for those dates. So if we need to amend it, then we can certainly bring it back, um, for that purpose.
Okay.
Sorry about that, thank you, Councilwoman Gill, uh, Chief, Chief, I see that you have your hand raised, as it relates to the, the water.
While, while I was acting, uh, city manager, reference to the, to that process, uh, we just had a total one applicant for that uh, Stormwater project that came through when I was doing my five months as acting city manager. I spoke to, when I gave him information on how to, um, recuperate his money that he spent in reference to it, but that was the only inquiry I had in reference to it the whole time.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other questions as it relates to, I'm sorry, I didn't see, oh, Councilman Hare?
Yeah, one other thing, um, um, that. But it's two things, um. So with this, with the hardship fund, so they'll, they'll be issued, there's be issued a check just for assistance for whatever they need it for, is that correct?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, they can use it for whatever they want, as long as they met the, the criteria and, and that, the city will cut them a check of, well, up to five thousand dollars, depending upon their household size, and they could use it to pay rent, to, to, to whatever purpose.
Would this be like a first come, first served, or will you have an opening and closing date?
No, it's, yeah, it's first come, first served, these, these function much more smoothly, first in, you know, first come, first served, and, and as you saw there, if the funds, if the program runs out of money and it's not replenished, then uh, that may be the case, because, um, it, you know, the, the folks, so it's encourage people to get in sooner rather. Uh that may be the case because um it will, you know, the the folks, so it's encourage people to get in sooner rather than later. Um. Because that actually happened in District Heights, uh the program. Uh a number of folks applied near the end and and. Um but the city, you know, we had, we had fully exhausted all the city's funds and and they didn't want to put any more into it, so.
Okay.
You'll see updates as as we go through the through the program, and so we'll be providing updates to Ms. Sabata where where things stand. So you'll have a pretty good sense of where the program, how it's going.
And one other thing, uh Mr. President, I did. The citizens did just now reach out to me, they would like to get an overview of what we're talking about. We're talking about it because we got the paperwork. They have no paperwork or anything, so they don't really know what we're talking about, so I think we need to give an overview of the program, even if it's just a brief overview. So they didn't know what we're talking about when we're asking questions and I know what's going on, so they're saying they're adopting that, they don't know what we're talking about, but we do.
Okay.
I can give a thirty second, so this this program is designed for households that were negatively impacted by the COVID nineteen public health emergency. Uh in in essence, two criteria, you have to reside within the city of Glen Arden's legal limits. And then two, your your annual gross household income, and I stress gross. And household is everybody who lives in the household. You know, if you have grandma, granddaughter, everybody, that's one household. We're not splitting. A household into multiple generations, the way the. The the guidelines were when the with the income levels that they're using. This fits with that household, so basically, if you meet that. Uh income levels, eligibility levels, and you live in a city. You're eligible for funding, provided you provide the required documentation, you know, tax returns, those kind of things. Um uh as part of the the application.
Thank you, Mr. Harry. Councilman Gill?
I know this is the most that you've heard me speak, I apologize, but I'm not really apologizing. I just want to. Send this message out to all of my colleagues. This um with the exception of the Glen Arden Housing um Authority. Um ARPA funding that we're gonna discuss shortly. I would implore you all to please get the word out to our citizens. Because what we don't want is for some folks to hear about it and some folks to not hear about it. I know the administration does their part as far as the newsletters, but. If you have your own mechanisms of reaching out to certain people that you know. At a larger scale, please get the word out to them once we approve this because we want those who are in need to get this form of assistance. Thank you.
All right. Next up is the. Glen Arden Housing Authority. Uh Mr. Himmler, if you could just do a thirty second overview so our citizens can know what this is about and we can open it up for questions.
Okay, so this was, this program was set up through Resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-three to provide sixty thousand dollars. To the Glen Arden Housing Authority uh and from funds under the American Rescue Plan Act. Um basically, the guidelines um. Uh we established, you see, but um without going through every single one, basically how this would work is. The uh the Housing Authority would would provide a a proposal. Uh estimated cost uh and and send a request to Ms. Abada for review. We would review that and provide our recommendation to the city. Um there's a number of eligible uses that that. That we uh included to give them flexibility that primarily deals with. You know, fixing things that impact residents, residents uh at the Housing Authority property. And we're also assisting um tenants who may owe past due accounts to the Housing Authority. In a nutshell, that's how it how it would work.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this and I I do apologize that I didn't get back to you on this because. One thing I don't want to do is I don't want to do the past due rent obligations to tenants. I my whole goal on this was to try to. Have something to help them um. Do a lot of the maintenance around the the project. I mean, I know they have. Have a lot of projects that need, a lot of capital projects that need to be done, so the rental assistance, I I don't think that need to be on there. Everything else I'm fine with when it comes down to maintenance of the other various um units. And um any any capital project, but I just don't, um I guess my thing also is that, you know, sixty thousand dollars and I I mean. I mean, I mean, a lot of times when I do, when I do grants on my job, it's usually for a major capital project, they come in, they give us a sixty thousand dollars for. What they're gonna do and then we're over and done with it. And you know, not just, okay, this week we're gonna do a payment of this one, so we're gonna be submitting invoices and everything, I don't. I mean, but I don't want it to be a a very time consuming thing for staff and administration where you're gonna be getting a a receipt for this. A receipt for a gallon of paint, a receipt for this, a receipt for that and all of that other stuff. Um so I'm looking at larger projects. You know? But yeah, but the rental rental assistance, I didn't, I want that included on here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Out there, um Councilman Miguel?
I absolutely agree with Councilman Herring, so the first bullet I would remove. I do want to bring something back up and I'm not sure if Councilman Herring, you or Councilman Hairston would recall this. Be um, one of the things that we had talked about when we were thinking about this legislation was to make sure that. Whoever the contractor was, if, and again, you could, I'm vaguely remembering whoever the contractor was. It was someone that the city approved and we wanted to also make sure that. Certain units weren't being cherry picked, like we wanted to make sure that. Which whichever households were in dire need, they would, or. I don't want to say neglected, but which uh whichever households were in dire need, they would get that assistance. So I'm not sure if that's what you recall as well, Councilman Herring or Councilman Hairston. Because if the if it, if you do recall that, then I think we need to reflect it somewhere in here.
Yeah, do we call that because it were, there were individual units that needed some serious attention. You know, and I remember we were talking because it was one unit that their ceiling was falling in, you know? So, yeah, I mean, I do recall us talking about that, addressing issues on that.
Likewise, and I definitely remember the the tenant that had a hole in their ceiling, sure.
I mean, what we could do is to provide them more direction, so when that whenever they identify. Or submit their requests, for example, if they're doing emergency repairs or. Uh that they identified a specific unit or units that that are involved in um the request. Would that address your concerns?
Yeah, I think that'll, yeah.
I only have one comment, uh. Based on some of the stuff that I've read, some of the stuff I've seen. Uh my only concern with this, uh the others you guys have addressed and addresses to the sponsors, I. I don't know how much, how far sixty thousand dollars is gonna go with some of the damage that I've seen to some of the um. The homes. Um. And so that that's my only concern, and I'll I'll defer to the sponsors, uh the council members who are sponsoring this. Um I just think, I don't know if that sixty thousand dollars is gonna go far. Um so that's my only concern.
I agree.
Um I'm in agreement with you as well, Council President. I think and it it would be in the council's pleasure, I think. Um if after the sixty thousand has been extent expended. If there's an opportunity for us to, with whatever is left over as far as ARPA dollars in the in our budget, it gets an opportunity for us to. Add more to this resolution, I'm sorry, to this legislation, or to come up with an additional one, then I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Uh Councilman Jones, oh, oh, I'll call the Councilman Jones, uh Councilman Harry, I'll come to you afterwards.
Okay.
Just wanted to ask Mr. Himmler a question and uh thank you, sir, for your presentation and I'm praying for your speedy recovery. Uh but will you, when you speak of the um. Work that needs to be done in these units, will you, will you or someone else be doing a visual of the ones that they submit to make? To ensure that the these are ones that um. Definitely are in need of uh repair?
I mean, we're more than happy to to work with Ms. Abada and her staff as part of the review of their requests. I mean, I think it's. Yeah, I'm a visual person, so if they submit a request to do X, Y, Z, I I would anticipate. Um. Us along with city staff going over and just making sure we can see specifically what what they're talking about. Um to to just have a better understanding of what the repairs are. Um given the conversation that's been going on, um. Where you're more focused on improving the the individual units, right? Um it may, we may wanna, or the city may wanna shrink. This eligible use list a little then. Uh so for example, the last bullet that had capital expenditures designed to improve the security and safety. That's gonna be more non-unit specific. So you may wanna not cover those type of things, um. Uh obviously dwelling unit improvements, that impacts the tenant, um. Emergency repairs, we can probably be more specific and say as it relates to residential units. Um if I'm reading you, kind of where you guys seem to be coalescing, you want it to be more. Trying to push them in a direction of improving the units themselves and not be like, oh, well. Our HVAC system needs updated or whatever, that kind of a thing versus focusing on the units.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh I hope we're being cognizant and considerate. We're not tiring you out, are we?
No, no, no.
Surgery, okay, okay. Just want to be considerate of your health.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
All right, sir, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments from council before we move on? Uh I think we we settled on that we'll. Uh switch some things, uh some eligible uses in here, uh we'll exhaust the sixty thousand with the opportunity to. Um increase the funding should the sixty thousand dollars run out uh using ARPA funds. All right. Thank you. Next up is the.
Yeah, HOA one, this is one where we really kind of need some direction from you all. Um as to where your preference is to go on this. We did do a good bit of research after talking to Ms. Sabata. Finding, look across the country what some other jurisdictions had used ARPA funds for that related to HOE, HOAs, you s. You know, you see several examples, not many of them have targeted HOA specifically with ARPA funds, but. Here's a few that did. Dallas, for example. Focused on alleys, sidewalks, obviously it's a city, so it's a little different, it's kind of setting, but. Lighting, et cetera, in 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 certain neighborhoods that the HOAs controlled. The those right away, so to speak. Um Fairfax did one more design for outdoor spaces, um. The NH ways, the the HOA zone, Neighborhood Association zones, that's just pools, playgrounds, those kind of things to improve. Those um. Kansas City. Did more focusing on like blighted property repairs, community cleanup, sidewalk repairs, those community garden. Type things and and HOA controlled property. And then. A number of them did allow um focus on financial assistance to benefit homeowners who uh were delinquent on HOAs. So we, and and we went back and listened to. Try to get some direction from listening to the past council sessions on Resolution eighteen, but. Um it really, we just need your direction to kind of come up with. A program design and then how we're thinking of doing this, to put it in context, it will be very similar to. The Housing Authority, so it won't be in, it'd be more of a directional kind of a guidance. Where, because the HOA is, there's only six, I believe, that are in the city limits. So instead of treating it like an application per se, like we did with the business one, nonprofits and the individuals, households. This one will be more dir- providing direction with the with a. A list of potentially eligible uses that the 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 city uh council is comfortable with. And then we'll kind of go from there and each one will submit their request and we'll review that along with the city staff and then kind of go from there.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, um since I was one of the sponsors of this year, because I'm looking at um HOAs, a lot of them have issues. You know, maintaining the property, so I'm looking at capital projects that can be done. With this money, uh sixty thousand dollars, I'm looking at road repairs, sidewalk repair, um you know, things that we don't cover because they are HOA. I know um one of me want to, one I want to put up a fence, you know, um to fence off like the playground area. Um so I'm looking at some capital improvements of their property. There's. So that's mostly what I was looking for, you know, to try to give them um some assistance that way.
I have a question, Councilman Harry, for for the sponsors. Uh would that include um. Security, for example, I know that an HOA is struggling with people dumping. Uh on their um their site, you know, dropping couches and everything and. Um they will probably want to install a camera system. Uh so. So it is, was that, will that fall under?
Yeah, I think anything that's gonna enhance the enhance the community and 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 enhance safety. So I think if they want to install a camera system to, you know. You know, for areas that they feel are are being uh abused with dumping or. Neglected, then yeah, I think that's that should fall under it too. That's what they want to do.
All right. Thank you, sir. Was there anything else yet, Mr. Harry?
Uh no, that's it.
Any other questions, comments from council members? Input? Okay, Mr. Himmler, do you need anything from us?
Just just, is there, is there anything that you don't want them to request, for example? I mean, I get, so so focus on solely focus on kind of capital related things.
Yeah.
Playground improvements is okay, Mr. Harry?
Yes.
Okay, um roads, sidewalks, to the extent they have them, security cameras.
Security, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Thank you, and I believe the final one is to Intergenerational Poverty Relief Fund.
Yes, this was created by Resolution fifty, twenty twenty-two, was allocated two hundred thousand dollars. This was um. Kind of really designed, again, for households that that were negatively impacted by COVID, that it, and talking to. Um. Uh Ms. Gillum, um and looking at some other things that um other programs, it was more kind of like a. Um want to say a quality of life, um like a rehabilitation. Uh uh home re- rehab, re- home rehabilitation type type program. To really improve the look of the community, the quality of life, the 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 beautification of the of the community and to help. You know, homeowners who qualify to, you know, primarily fix up, you know, issues with the like. The visual part, the front of their houses, exteriors, um. And of their of their homes, and so that kind of became the genesis of 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 this program. Um to 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 try to accomplish that goal. Um the new kind of word for a lot of these programs is called strategic kind of code enforcement. Where it's, you know, there's properties where, you know, the porch may be in need of repair and it gets flagged, you know. By code enforcement or this would be a a fund. To to the extent the household qualifies based on income and some of the other things, that they could have that. Porch fixed or um, you know, things, things of that sort. Um and you just kind of see the list of eligible improvements and repairs. Included roofing siding, chimney repairs, if the chimney's falling apart and 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 and. Those kind of things, replacing windows and doors, sidewalks, maybe some sidewalk repairs, those type of things. Um. That's kind of the genesis of it, so it's kind of a hybrid of of a a number of different programs.
Thank you, Miss Hamlet. Any questions from the council?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, the one thing I did have in in the, uh, in the draft. We just needed direction, I know Ms. Guillaume gave us direction on was. Was there a time, minimum time period that somebody had to live in their home before applying and then second? That they had to intend to remain in their home for a period of time, so. And and in both cases, Ms. Guillaume, I think you said yes, you preferred to have. Both of those things, so that, um. So in in the case of. You would have to live in the home for one year prior to applying, so this would not be somebody who just bought a house. Last week and wants to and could apply, so this is somebody who's been, uh, established homeowner for at least a year. And and is applying, and then secondly. It it's, and we have to flush out with city staff how to go about doing this is. Their intention, they must indicate their intention is to remain in the home for. A period of two years, minimum two years post completion. So it doesn't act as I come in and I get my roof fixed, but then I turn around that the following week and sell my house. Okay, try that that type of situation.
All right, thank you. Councilman Harry, I see you're unmuted. Did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I did have a question. Um, so I I guess that was, that's gonna be one of my questions, how you wanna stop them, and if they do it, what are you, what is the real question?
There's ways of doing it, I mean, you could essentially put it as in in, um, that that it rides with. One would be in in their agreement, but there's a way you could do it where it rides. Uh, as part of the property, so, um. That if they did turn around and sell, cause when I used to work for the county, the county had a single family rehab program. And and if if the the senior in that case would sell their house. The money would get clawed back, so to speak, um, at as part of that transaction. New Carroll is running a kind of a similar program where they basically kind of have a. Proportionality approach to it where the, you know, if you sell it in year two, it's certain percentage of the grant has to get get paid back. As part of the process. And the maximum grant amount or the grant amount is maximum is up to four thousand dollars, so it's not a lot of. Money when it comes to these programs, typically they're much, much higher.
Um, so I guess. If they had work done on it, who's gonna inspect that work to make sure it was Monday was actually done it too, it's about the code.
Yeah, so the way this would work and there's.
Well, I'm sorry, Miss Hamlet, uh, if we could let Councilman Harry finish, please, and then. Okay.
So the the way this is conceptualized is. They would submit an application, they would bring. A contractor in tow with their proposal, proposed proposed work done, proposed cost. All the vendor, the contractor information. The city would review, we we, we, the city and us would review that. And if it meets the qualifications, then they would be, receive a preapproval and a notice to proceed. Once the that work is done, both the the city and the homeowner would sign off that the work is in fact done. Um, uh, and then once that joint sign off is done, then the contractor would receive payment.
Okay.
And and the reason why, the reason why we're kinda punting it to the homeowner due to contractor is. Is this for the sake of time and and ease, because some of these programs do have the governments go and select and pre. Predetermined a list of vendors. Uh, that you could do it that way, but it just takes more time, because you got to go through a competitive process yourselves and go through and vet them. Where whereas this way, it's it's cleaner, um, and and they can just go and get a contractor themselves. Um, but they can't proceed until they get the notice to proceed and sign.
Okay.
Agreement between the city and 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 themselves.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamlet. Councilman Harry, now you, are you finished?
Uh, just one more que- this might be. This might be, yeah, I have one question. Cause it's freezing up.
Yeah, you're you're breaking up.
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Think we just lost him. Well, with any other questions, we'll allow him to circle back. Once he, um, logs back on. Any other question, council members?
Council President?
I'm back. Okay, I'm back, sorry about that. That's what happened when you're working with Fab G, you know, that. I do think they get ready to do, but, um, at this way, one other question, this could be, this may be for the, um, uh, for for. Or the sponsors, so will a person be able to apply for the Good Samaritan and hardship? Or can you just apply for one or the other? Then I mean, intergenerational?
Yes, because they're two completely separate things, so the answer is yes.
Hmm, so you can get spa, you can get up to five thousand dollars in cash, I think it is, and you can get another four thousand dollars to work on your house.
Yes, because the, at least for this particular one, the intergenerational poverty one, that one is restricted. Whereas the other one, it's just specifically pertaining to hardship.
Hmm, okay, I'd be like one or the other, but stress father, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Um, I only have one comment. It's not a big ticket item for me, um, it's just the eligibility. Um, I'll feel more comfortable if you have to be in the home for two years prior to being, um. Eligible for this, uh, because I know that typically in that first year that you're in it. So for example, if I buy, um, um, a previously established home, not a brand new home, but a used home. And then I have ideas of what I wanna do, so then I'm getting a, uh. You know, passion to my financing, whatever I wanna do to enhance the the work of the house in that first year. Um, and so just for that piece, since that might be already covered by some another financing source. Uh, I think I would feel more comfortable with it being two years, it's not a huge sticker point for me, I just think that, um. You know, longer tenure in the city. And, you know, I I just think it'll make it a more solid program.
Council President?
Councilwoman Gill?
I am, I am actually not opposed to that, I think for me, it was just to make sure that it wasn't somebody who just came and. Is trying to take. I don't want to say take, is somebody who just moved in and is getting money, you know, so. Tom, well, I I'll just say I'm not opposed to that, and I know that. Tom mentioned that my answer was yes to the minimum, to the minimum period requirement, so. Interested in hearing what direction we could give Tom on both, so. What I'm, as far as both is the minimum requirements, are we okay with that? The and. You, as far as one of the minimum requirements, it's the, the first one will be two years as far as residing in the city for two year, at least three year. I'm sorry, at least two years before applying.
All right, any objections to the two years? Okay, then we can stick with the two years for, um. Proceeding requirement. And then. Afterwards, you have to be in the, Mr., had to be in a home for. Two years post work. I'm fine with two years post work. Any opposition to two years post, before and post? Okay, so then we can, here and now, we can stick with the two and two. You know, the comments from sponsor? All right, here none. Uh, Mr. Hamlet, do you need anything else from us?
No, this, you guys have been awesome as always, providing the direction, we'll make the changes and we'll work with Ms. Habata and staff to. You know, get these moving.
All right, thank you, sir.
Now, Mr. Curtis?
Uh, Ms. Sabata?
Uh, only one question, is there anything that council desires to have in form, in in the form of some? Uh, approval document, or is this a work session enough to give us the go ahead to make the changes and to start the programs?
I believe we already have, we've already approved the resolutions, correct?
Yes. Do you need anything else?
Not that I'm aware of, and Councilor can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we're, we need, you, you need anything else from us to move forward. Outside of us, uh, approving the guidance, uh, that Mr. Hamler provided.
Okay, thank you.
I know we're waiting on some, some final edits for, I think, two of them. Um, Councilman Harry, I hear, I heard you say something.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, I think we gotta prove the guidelines, cause the the the. Resolution established the program, but we didn't have any guidelines attached to them. And now that we have the guidelines, we need to approve those guidelines.
Yeah, are you recommending that? Yep. But not, you're not talking about by resolution, correct?
Yeah, by resolution. So you have a record of what, uh, you have a record of what you're doing, I mean, you're you're, we we talked about it, but there's nothing in writing, we need to get something to this people officially, this is what we're gonna do. And then we have some record of what we want, what we want. How this program is gonna operate, not a lot of times the programs already have guidelines attached to them, but we were trying to get these things established. But we didn't have any guidelines attached to them. I mean, there there, it's just a matter of doing a resolution, bring it to the public hearing on on Tuesday. For each one of the programs that we have guidelines for.
So, completely understand what you're saying, um. Don't necessarily agree, but yeah, I'll open it to the council, uh, is there a second to have this, uh, approved by resolution?
Seconds.
Okay, um. So, Miss Harry, you're you're saying just create the resolution, bring it to the public.
My thing is, if we're gonna, if we're doing this program, we need to let them be completely informed and aware of what we, what we're doing. Right now, in their work session, now we have it at a public hearing, okay, this program is coming up, these are the guidelines we're getting ready to vote on. So the work can get out there, which which we need to get the world out there as much as possible, but the guidelines should be somewhere written. That somebody can say, these are the official guidelines for this program. I've never seen the organization not do it, you know, so that's what I'm saying, you know. Get it out there. Resolution, you know, whereas we're doing this program, attached out of, out of, attached on the following guideline, bam, we're done, two asses and you're done.
Okay, well, we'll allow the, uh, citizens come out and speak on the guidelines that we've. Taken a consensus on tonight, uh, the citizens have a opportunity to speak on it or at the public hearing next week. Uh, and then we will vote on, I believe, our regular sessions on the night, on the twentieth, cause nineteenth is June. All right.
Uh, to be, to be clear, Mr. Curtis, are we, are we doing, uh, resolutions for each or one resolution that covers? All of them, or what's the preference?
Didn't want for each.
Each program is different, so you would do one for each.
Yeah. Councilman Ferguson? Okay, yeah. For each.
Thank you.
All right. Again, thank you, Mr. Hamler, for your time, uh, and I think collectively, y'all pray for your speedy recovery. And looking forward to, uh, implementing these programs with you and your your company.
All right, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Thank you.
All right, next up is legislation. Uh, first up is the resolution to purchase public works pickup truck. Um, were there any questions on this particular resolution? We don't have to read it in a work session. Okay. Here none, we'll move on to the next resolution.
I do have a question on this.
Councilman Harry?
So what is, yeah, what is that? What is the cost on this? Okay, I see. So this is, this Apple Ford Lincoln, are they a government contractor?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, I know, we've never used them before.
I I can't say, uh, I mean, I know that they, um, they have been a government contractor for a while.
And this price does not, does not include, okay, it doesn't include outfitting.
No, the the, uh, budget and amount is, uh, for this. Item is sixty thousand and the vehicle is in a cost fifty thousand to sixty. And I was informed by Mr. Simpson that the upfitting would be somewhere in the neighborhood under four thousand dollars. So, um, the sixty thousand, uh, you know, uh. Figure, uh, we're, we're well under for buying the truck and upfitting it with the lights and the. The decals.
And you have the, um. Is this a snowplow that's attached to this?
I'm sorry?
Is this the snowplow from Intercon Truck Equipment?
Yes, that was, yeah, no, that was my fault, uh, uh, for, uh, putting that with the package. Uh, we had a couple of different quotes, and no, we're not using them because it exceeds the sixty thousand, we have found some other. Vendors who are less expensive, uh, that we can look to purchase from.
Uh, okay, all right, so that shouldn't be a part of this.
No, no, we don't need to have that in this mix.
All right, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is the resolution to pave the parking lot at MLK Park, any? Questions, comments related to this resolution that was provided to the council?
I'm really might mute all. But, uh, but I just wanna be sure, so we we are sure that we have all these funds available to do this parking lot, uh, Ms. Sabata, Sabata?
Yes, we do, uh, I think Mr. Stewart is here, if you wanna hear from him, uh, he can also chime in. But he's the one that gave me those figures.
Okay, yeah, I do wanna ask a question about the support equipment for HVAC, that ten thousand dollars, were we supposed to get work done on something of that? Of that nature?
Oh, support equipment HVAC, um, I can't answer that, maybe Mr. Simpson can, I'm looking for Mr. Stewart here, yes, he's there. Dean, did you wanna tackle that first and then, uh, Charles can chime in?
Yes, there are funds available towards the, um, for the, the. The parking lot, um. We actually did some movement of funds, um, repurpose some funds from different areas, but did the. Capital, um, program. And from there, we could, um, do the necessary, um, pavement of the MLK Park.
I think Mr. Herring's question is the support equipment for the HVAC. Is that gonna be needed, and he wanted to know a little more about that.
Okay, so I thought, um. Charles will let speak on that, but that has been on the budget for some years now to have the HVAC. Work on, and it was, it was never done. So that fund is still there, I am not sure exactly which one of the AC, um. units needs to be worked on. But, um, I guess Mister Simpson, Charles could speak on that if possible, thank you.
All right, good evening, uh, uh, council, um, Mayor Council and everyone else, um, yeah, so, uh, as of now, I do have a contract or actually working with Hugh G. to make sure we have a full assessment of all HVAC uh, equipment, as it stands now, uh, the money could be used for this particular fiscal year um, to get the parking lot, and I believe we are going to budget for the anticipation of having to possibly deal with one unit, uh, but until I get the full assessment, nothing would indicate that we would need to replace it with, before the fiscal year, uh, or before the end of this particular month.
Okay, cuz I know, I thought it was one of the compressors to deal with at a gold rung, that was kinda like out of whack, and I thought they were gonna do some upgrades on that, um, but I don't know, I, I, maybe they did it in another budget, I didn't think they did, but, all right, okay.
Sir, I, uh, I don't have any record of it, however, I am making sure we have an assessment, actually, I have proposals from Hugh G. right now, as it relates to uh, doing a full assessment of HVAC equipment, uh, as well as making sure we have all our HVAC equipment on a preventative maintenance schedule.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm sorry, moving on to a resolution to support recreation activities in the city of Glen Arden. I believe that is, any questions or comments related to that, uh, piece of legislation?
Yes.
Councilman Harry?
Yeah, okay, I, I okay, I really have a problem with this piece of legislation, cuz this legislation is just the, basically cherry picking again, um, the Glenon Track Club, which is not in Glen Arden, and the Boys and Girls, uh, team, which I'm more apt to look at them than I would the Glenon Track Club. Um, again, we're sitting here, we, first, we're gonna give them gratis in the gold room, which is two thousand dollars, then we're gonna give them twenty-five hundred dollars, then we're gonna allow them to apply for grants. I'm not understanding why we're sitting here supporting these organizations when we have so many other needs in the city. I'm not saying, uh, there's, they're not good organizations, but I still see streets that need to be paved, pothoses out here, and they're not getting done. Um, I think that, um, and when I ask, I'm telling you right now, as long as I've been in Glenon, I've never seen any advertisements from Glenon Track Club for any, about joining there, the track club, it's a membership organization. I poured their, uh, nine nineties, and I see that, you know, most of their money comes from membership fees and assessments. Um, I just don't think it's fair to the citizens in Glen Arden, also, section on six oh two of the charter really, basically forbid us not, forbid us using public money for private companies, it says, we can, we can expend money, the council has the power to expend money for public purposes, they, these are private organizations. Um, I just don't see where we're, where our kids are benefiting, um, benefiting from any of that, um, let me say, six oh two, number twenty-one, finances, council, it says six oh two, uh, enumeration of specific powers for the council, uh, number twenty-one, to levy, assess, and collect at Valium, at Valorum, uh, property taxes to expend municipal funds for any public purpose. This is not a public purpose, this is a private organization. Both of the organizations are private organizations, and if you wanna give them grants in the gold room, because that's a, that's a, uh, enterprise, that's one thing, but we're taking citizens' tax dollars and giving it to a private organization, and the charter is not allowing us to do that. You know, now, I can't argue with the upper money, cuz the upper money is, is not ours, they, they say you can do that with the upper money, but this money is tax dollars that they wanna put in the budget every year, for these two groups specifically, who are already getting gratis for the gold room, which is two thousand dollars, uh, now they're gonna give them another twenty-five hundred dollars, and they can apply separately, and this program is also open up to anybody out here who wants a grant. That's not our job, to fund other, other nonprofit organizations outside of the city of Glen Arden. Reading this resolution is, 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 is opening up to everybody. And I'm trying to figure out, when are we gonna sit there and worry about what's going on in Glen Arden, like those war three streets, I'd take, take two million dollars and put it in, put it out there and get the streets paved over there, they haven't been paid in fifteen years. So I'm just saying, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with this piece of legislation, I really get tired of, you know, uh, us trying to support organizations that are not really supporting, not supporting the city of Glen Arden, if somebody comes over here and say, what, they're the Glenon Track Team, okay, we had a Glenon Track Team, that's all well and good, but when are they gonna come in here, when am I gonna see something, them come to the city and say, hey, you know what, could y'all put this on, um, your cable station, we're looking for kids to, uh, join the Glenon Track Club? And I, what I, and I would really like to know how many kids in Glen Arden are actually on the Glenon Track Club, I've been asking that for eighteen years and have not gotten an answer yet. And while I think it's a good organization, again, I feel that we have greater, more pressing needs in the city of Glen Arden, for the people in, who live in Glen Arden, and, um, providing a service for those people in Glen Arden, I'm not saying it's a bad program, I'm not saying this, uh, you know, it is, it doesn't benefit some of the kids, yeah, it does benefit quite a few kids. But then again, living in Glen Arden, I don't see how it benefits our kids. And it's, and it's, it seems like, it seems this is a constant giveaway to a private and independent groups, cherry picking these groups. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. Councilman Jones?
I don't understand all the animosity against a, a, a program that has benefited so many children, not only in Glen Arden, but outside of Glen Arden. Uh, Mister Colbert started Glen Arden Track Team about forty years ago in the city of Glen Arden, because there were so many children that, uh, benefited, uh, at this time in, in life, a, a lot of people aren't having children like we had back then, in my family, there were seven children, the Smallwood family had eleven children, there was five children in the Ophus family, and so on and so forth, it was a minimum of five children in each household in Glen Arden, we don't have that anymore, but the Glen Arden Track Team, when, in, in fact, um, Mister Colbert, uh, ran in the, and some of the kids ran in the, um, pin relays this year, and when you saw the pictures of Mister Colbert running in pin relays at his age, uh, which was, uh, phenomenal, but you saw the pictures, and he has a Glen Arden across his chest, so he's still, they still represent Glen Arden, um, Mister Henry lives in Glen Arden, Mister Fields lives in Glen Arden, they're both coaches for the, uh, for the track club, uh, I, I don't see any issue with us, um, supporting our legacy, I call, I always will call them our legacy organizations, the Boys and Girls Club, I was a part of the Boys and Girls Club, in fact, I was named most outstanding girl in the boys' club, and I do have documentation of that, where I went to Maryland National Capital Park and Planning, and I was nominated and was given the award, so the Boys and Girls Club and the Glen Arden Track Team, especially the Boys and Girls Club, cuz like I said, if I was in the Boys, uh, participant in the Boys and Girls Club as a cheerleader, you know, as a, um, one of the children participating in that program, it, it's been around for a long time, and I call those our legacy organizations, where they're a legacy to the city of Glen Arden, and I feel that we should support them, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, um. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Um, any other comments? I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'll go to, um, well, it's just a, just one point of clarification, uh, Councilman Fareed, before you go, um, and, and, and Councilman Jones, this is not, you know, against you, I just, the first part of what you said, you, you don't understand all the animosity towards it. I don't think Councilman Harry was sh- showed any animosity, he was just stating his opinion of where he thinks funds should go, so I did not want that to be lost in translation, and, and, um, by no means, Councilwoman Jones is saying that you intended to say that he was, you know, that there was animosity from, uh, Councilman Herring, I just wanted to clear that, so the people who are viewing would know that at no time that Councilman Herring expressed any animosity, he's just expressed an opinion of where he thinks funds should go, and, and not go.
Thank you, Council President, I stand corrected.
Councilman Fareed?
Sorry, now, can you come over to me a bit? No, I just wanted to reiterate what the purpose of this, um, legislation is for, it's, it's really to benefit the children in the city of Glen Arden, and any organizations that are looking to bring, um, community-based recreational activities to the city, with so many cuts happening, um, in public schools, even with, uh, aftercare programs, um, et cetera, there's not many activities for recreational activities for children that are um, uh, cost accessible, and so with these organizations being legacy organizations like Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Jones pointed out, and our contribution to these organizations, the expectation would be that it would benefit for the children in the city of Glen Arden. Um, in addition to those two legacy organizations that we have specified, there, um, is also money set aside for any other community-based programs that would seek to provide opportunities for the city of Glen Arden's children, and so that's, again, what the primary purpose is, it's not, it's not, uh, excuse me, about trying to, um, promote some organizations over others, um, as Councilwoman Jones so, uh, elaborately stated, these two organizations have had significant impact on the city of Glen Arden, um, and if there are others that want to make that same sort of contribution in, in legacy and history in the city, um, they have access to, you know, apply to those, and with those other, uh, sorry, with the money that's being set aside for other organizations to apply, um, to, there could be multiple, more than two organizations that would be, um, benefiting with that additional funds, and it would be at the city's discretion how those organizations get selected. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Uh, Councilman Hairston.
I'm just had a question, wh- where do they practice? The track, the track team, anybody got an answer, like, what do they?
Track team, the track team practices, because when, uh, the county came up, when Wayne Curry came through and got the sports and learning complex, they were able, because they needed a track locally close, cuz they were using all of the high schools, like Central High School, or Duval, or those, uh, uh, flowers, then they got, uh, were able to get into the sports and learning complex and use the indoor and outdoor track that was, uh, used with our tax dollars to build, and they use that facility to, to practice.
And they run in, like, Glen Arden jerseys, I'm just asking, cuz I don't really know too much, so I'm just trying to get.
Yeah, their jerseys, everything is Glen Arden, Glen Arden Track, is Glen Arden across, like I said, Coach Colbert, when he was at Pin Relays, his uniform was Glen Arden Track.
And where do, um, how do we get information on, like, how to go support it, like, if we wanted to go see them run, or wanted to see some of the, um, I don't really know too much about track, I'm sorry, but like, how do we, as a city, get informed on, like, you know, how to keep up with them, like, to keep up with the track team to support, like, since it's, you know, Glen Arden based?
Uh, through Mister Henry or Mister Fields, but I, they, they just had two track meets already this season, I should have put out in, uh, some information concerning the track meet, they had track meet, um, invitational meet at the Sports and Learning Complex is when they have home meets, that's where their home meets are, you know, and they just had another one, uh, they had, they run every, every weekend.
Okay, so I was just asking, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how people get put on a team that's from the city, and or how, as a city, how do we get it out to our people to go to support it, that's all, so that's, that's all, that's all, I had no other questions other than that.
Thank you, Councilman Hairston, Councilman Guillaume.
Thank you, Council President, I just wanna overstate what was previously mentioned by Councilwoman Jones and Councilwoman Fareed, as far as, um, the Glen Arden Track Club being a legacy organization, I mean, even before I moved to the city of Glen Arden, I heard about the Glen Arden Track Club, and I still see how they rep Glen Arden everywhere that they go. Um, so, that's one of the main things, the other thing that I also wanna say is when they had, that, when they have their award ceremony, it's one of the most emotional things that I've, I've, emotional event that I go to, because I see so many folks who talk about being native Glen Ardeners, or former Glen Ardeners that were part of that track club, and to see how much of an impact these, this particular track club has done, I, I consider it a disservice for me not to honor them in that particular way, um, and I'm, again, I'm just speaking about Glen Arden Track Club, since that was mentioned more than the Boys and Girls Club, I do want to also make mention of the resolution that, um, as it's written, I think it's, some things get lost in translation, because while we are, as far as one A is concerned, as far as the legislation is concerned, we speak about allocating resources to the Boys and Girls Club and the Glen Arden Track Club, one B speaks about other organizations being able to apply for funding, so it's not that Glen Arden Boys and Girls Club and Glen Arden Track Club are getting money allocated, and they, and then they are also applying for additional funding, that's not what it is, these two legacy organizations are just getting twenty-five hundred dollars, should the council vote yes, but then one B allows other community-based organizations that are providing a service to our youth, an opportunity to apply for funding as well, so, that's it.
Yeah, and just to follow up, sorry, sorry. Council President. Council President, may I? Yeah, just to follow up on the point that Councilwoman Guillaume is making, um, uh, the track club and the Boys and Gl- Girls Club are explicitly excluded from being able to apply to the funds in one B.
Okay, Miss President. Councilman Harry?
Okay, so I need some clarification on this, because it says, funding support, allocate financial resources to support organizations and groups that focus on providing fiscal activity programs for children. Each fiscal year, beginning with fiscal year twenty twenty-four, minimum twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars will be allocated to the Glenon Boys and Girls Club and the Glenon Track Club. They don't have to apply, cuz they automatically getting it. So they don't have to apply, but everybody else has to apply. So, where's the fantasy in that? Okay, that's the first thing, second thing is, again, and Miss Jones wasn't implying that I was held, had an animosity towards the Glenon Track Club, I have absolutely no animosity towards the Glenon Track Club, there's been plenty of times where I voted to have, give them gratis in the gold room and everything else. I'm just saying that I know that Glenon Track Club is not in Glen Arden, the kids from Glen Arden know absolutely nothing about it. Uh, Councilman Harrison was just talking about, you know, when do you do this, when, where is it, where are the meets at, where is this at? Miss Jones, oh, I should have told you about it, no, you should not have told us about anything, they should be coming to this, if they love Glen Arden, and they want Glen Arden kids to participate, they should be coming out here, coming up here to the, the town, saying, hey, can you put this on your social media, we're taking memberships for Glenon Track Club. That has not happened since I've been on this council. So where's this love for Glen Arden, this love for that children in Glen Arden, getting our kids out there to exercise, getting our kids out there to run, you councilmembers have not even seen one thing on social media given to the city of Glen Arden, to say, have our kids come out there and participate. And I have not seen it since I've been in, on this council for eighteen years, in fifty-nine years in the city of Glen Arden. So, no, it is, it isn't right, it isn't fair, and I think it's not, um, you know, y'all wanna keep on calling these things legacy organizations, I'm like, this, this, this organization is a nonprofit, private nonprofit organization that uses the name Glen Arden, anybody can use the name Glen Arden, I can go open up a store right now and call it the Glen Arden Weed Store. You know, I could do anything with Glen Arden, Glen Arden is a public, it's a public name now. But I'm just saying that, again, it's not fair to the citizens in this community to allocate our money to private organizations when the charter says that our money, that the council can only expend money for public purposes. And that's what, that's what I don't think is fair, especially when I'm walking around here and I'm seeing roads that need to be repaired, roads that haven't been paved, roads in war three, where some of the councilmembers live, that haven't been touched in fifteen years, and you've just spent half a million dollars on one little stretch, but you got eleven million dollars in the bank, and no one's moving forward to do that. You know, but yeah, you wanna sit there and give money to these legacy organizations, I don't care if it's two dollars or twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars, bottom line is, I wanna see the money being used in the city of Glen Arden, not going out to other organizations, and then you're gonna op- open this up to more organizations that are not in the city of Glen Arden, cuz you, it keeps on saying community-based organizations, but you're not in Glen Arden, so even outside organizations not gonna apply for a five hundred dollar grant, why are we doing the business that other owners, that, that, the county and state governments do? And a lot of them don't even give out funding for private concerns. Again, we need to look at our charter, the charter says we cannot expense money for, we can only expense money for public purposes, this is not a public purpose, this is a private five oh one C three, they're a membership organization, look at their nine nineties, it stays clearly where to get their resources from, and what they spend their money on. You know, like I said, I'm not saying it's a bad organization, I think it's a great organization, I think they do some great things, both of the organizations, but again, my loyalty is to the citizens and, and But again, my loyalty is to the citizens and, and the, and the kids in this community, you know, anybody's trying to hit surveying woods up to get a mentoring program up there. I've been knocking my head against the wall trying to get stuff up at surveying woods. Where's the, where's the assistance there? That's one of the poor performance schools in Prince George's County. They took kids out of Glen Arden Woods, put them up to that school, gave them a poor education. Me and I were councilmen, small, when the former councilman Wilson, you went down to school board, we hit the state, we hit the county, we had everybody else we could to try to get resources up there. You know, so I'm just saying, you know, there's things I needed in this community. Give it to outside groups. I'm calling selfish. I'm selfish. I don't care if you're a legacy organization. I don't care what you did in the past, you're definitely Martin. You're, you're, you're registered in Bowie. That's what you're registered at Atlanta Post Office box. Everything is outside of Glen Arden. I, 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 I just don't, I, me, that's just me. Maybe because I was born here, I'm here for fifty-nine years, but some people, you know, they really, you know, are close to, because their kids want to be on track and they're close to it, so they're going to sit there and advocate for them. You know, I don't think it's right, you know? So, um, thanks. That's, that's all I got to say. I'm done with this.
Thank you. Final word to you, Councilwoman Fareed, on this topic. Councilwoman Fareed, you're on mute.
Sorry to think you weren't muting me while I was trying to. Um, so I, well, there was a comment made about council members not seeing anything on, on social media, not being made aware about um, information about either of the clubs. I, I would, I just want to say that's not true. Um, I have seen that prior to my becoming a council member. Um, so there is information available. I think it just depends on, you know, what your uh demographic is. I'm, I'm, I'm a mother of a young child, so I see, tend to see more information like that. Um, I also wanted to address the one B point. And as a matter of fact, the reason why that particular piece was put in was to allow for organizations that are, that provide um an interest in our children in the city of Glen Arden. And um, part of the impetus for that was uh discussions with Judge Slovenia Woods about their need for a um athletic program or a intramural program um for their preschoolers who are not old enough to attend aftercare programs. But because of their age and when they were born, um, which is uh some of them during the pandemic or some of them right before the pandemic and then being um in isolation and not being active as typical children had been prior to the pandemic, um, and being, you know, very much attuned to the screens. They are having challenges passing the um, the physical test that young children need to take um, that demonstrates that they've developed their gross uh motor skills. And um, so I have collaborated with Judge Slovenia Woods and um, another organization to uh bring intramural activities to their uh, to their schools and aftercare program. And one of the um, one of the discussion points was that that program would need to be not just restricted to the students at Judge Slovenia Woods, but open to um, children in the city of Glen Arden of preschool age. Uh, that, those discussions around how that program would exactly um roll out um, are still being discussed, but they will need funding in order to do that. So, to Councilman Herring's point about um, the city and bringing the resources to the city, um, that is exactly what this legislation is meant to do. If there's a concern about the number of uh, children in the city of Glen Arden who are accessing these services with uh Glen Arden Track Club and um, the Boys and Girls Club, then we can certainly look at putting certain stipulations or agreements in place with them um, for what that, you know, what comes with that money. Uh, I, I would not say that we can necessarily say it has to be a certain number of children because the track team would be based on, you know, skill as, as with the Boys and Girls Club um, for at least football, I would assume. Um, but those are things that we should discuss and I, I just don't want it to be, I don't want issues to be conflated and to say that if we do one thing in the city, um, that means we can't do another. That's, that's not true. We're a municipal government that has um, an operating budget to provide all types of services for um, the city and being able to support recreational activities for children in the city of Glen Arden should not conflict with our ability to pave the streets. Um, or do any other infrastructure or any other type of work that we need to do in the city of Glen Arden. If we don't, if we don't feel we have money enough to do this, then we can certainly look at the amounts as well. But I think that the spirit and purpose of what this legislation is about is for the benefit of the children of the city of Glen Arden. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Next up is a resolution to revise the goal room rules. Councilwoman Jones, I know that there was a mishap with uh what we received. And I, I do agree that we've had this for quite some time and I too would like this, like to see this uh finally get pushed to cross the goal line. I'll defer to you on this point, Councilwoman Jones.
Council President, I am a reasonable woman. Most folks would say. And it is, um, I didn't expect our um presentations to be so long, even though they were much needed because we need to do those types of things to ensure what it is we're, we're doing. It is now nine forty-one. And if you would uh, agree and the council would agree that we could pick a date to just do this because it is, the doc, the first document for the goal room is uh twenty-four pages. Uh, the next document is five pages and the next document is four. Uh, it's no more than, I'll say no more than fifty pages, but still if that will give uh council uh once again, an opportunity to look over uh this information. And I will ensure once again that the information that's being presented, I will do the hard copies and put them in your, your um in your mailboxes and I will do, send the email again to ensure that you have the correct documentation concerning this resolution. So, um, if you wanted to uh, get a availability now, I would appreciate that so that we can sit down and get this uh, uh taken care of. Because like I said before, the um what the alcohol um, and uh board also said, we need to put some criterias in place that our venue needs to have criterias in place.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Is anyone available after June the fourteenth or June the twentieth? That's uh twenty-first, those are Wednesdays at six thirty.
I'm good, sure.
All right, so we're, right, so aim for the uh Councilwoman Jones, I'll let you pick the fourteenth or the twenty-first.
Uh, the fourteenth.
Okay, fourteenth. Anyone not able to?
I'm not available June fourteenth is my one.
I'm not available either, I'm sorry.
I don't really think it would take that long. Should be no more than an hour. If we had come with, you know, already read and looked at the uh documents.
Councilwoman Guillaume, twenty-first is good for you.
Yes, I couldn't unmute. I'm sorry, yes.
All right, uh, so, Council Clerk, can you, can you pencil us in for the twenty-first, June the twenty-first at six thirty and hopefully we can um, get to that rather quickly?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. I love this a lot, meetings in June, Council. And agendas. All right, um. Next up is contract extension with Charles P. Johnson Jr. and Associates, uh, Ms. Sabata.
Uh, yes, um. Um, you've got my memo, cover memo on the um agreement. I discovered uh, upon making an assignment to them for the Seventh Street Park for a flood, flood plain delineation. Uh, and I got a copy of their contract uh, uh from staff and discovered that the it likely expires sometime in February of this year. Uh, so uh, in order for them to uh do some work for us, we need to have a contract in place with them that is um, you know, the, addresses the fact that the contract has expired and uh, and to be able to get them going on some of the things that are on hold right now that need to be done. So my recommendation is to execute a new contract with CPJA. Um, and um, I've uh, got a copy in your package of the contract um, that is an updated version of the original contract. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those questions. And in, included in the document was the first page of the old contract, um, along with a notice to proceed. Um, that was dated, it looks like um, either February the eleventh or February the twenty-first of twenty twenty. So three years would make it have expired in um, in, yeah, yeah, in twenty twenty-three in February.
So, are you asking for a resolution to?
Uh, I'm asking for council's uh, uh direction on a contract extension for them. And yes, we would do a resolution for the public hearing if that's okay or unless you want to do it by, by consent um, for us to uh, have the authorization, a motion, a vote to do that at your meeting on the nineteenth. Uh, if you prefer a resolution, we'll draft a resolution.
Uh, because you, you anticipate this contract to be more, uh, we're going to spend more than six thousand dollars, correct?
Yes, yes, it would be uh, contracted, they would be assigned uh, uh projects as, over a three-year period as council would uh, you know, ask uh, for them to undertake certain things like um, architectural services for the um, uh, for anything having to do with this building, with the public safety building, et cetera.
Yeah, uh, you could bring the, if you could um, draft a resolution to bring to the public hearing. All right. I'll stick for a second, oh. Cooperatives agree with Prince George's County to participate in Urban County uh, CDBG program. Authorize the signed cooperative agreement. Ms. Sabata?
Yes, uh, recommending that the city opt in to participate in the county CDBG program and um, you know, of council action could be a simple vote to authorize the signing of the cooperation agreement and the certification of cooperation. In other words, uh, a, a, the um, certification, if you'll see, take a look at the documents, would basically confirm that the um, council did vote to authorize the certification uh, and signing of all the documents. Um, as noted, the, the area um, that is eligible for CDBG, funding would be word one only.
Any questions?
If you want a resolution, uh, we can do that or a vote, we would need a vote so that the certification can be signed, saying that on such and such a date, the council had agreed by a majority vote uh, to opt in. So the question is, you want to do it by resolution? You want to do it by a majority vote on a voice vote or what's your pleasure?
Believe we could do this by consensus unless there's an opposition to that.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm opposed to it because you need to do it by resolution. I don't know why y'all don't want to do this stuff by paper and have something attached to that. This Donnis Voice Home thing is driving me crazy. They, they're going to ask for it.
Councilman Harry, it's just an opinion. It, it's just opinion. No need to get frustrated.
Yeah, I do get frustrated because I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, some, some, some's going to slip through the crack one day and we all going to be sitting here looking at the uh, officer of state prosecutor. Y'all going to, y'all going to keep this up and it's just going to be like, okay, y'all go ahead and keep doing it if you want to, but yeah, all right, go ahead. I'm done. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Uh, any other comments or questions from the council? And is this to, I'm sorry, is this to spend money?
No, thi- this is to uh, participate in the Urban County CDBG program of Prince George's County. And so there's documents that need to be signed uh, once it's voted by the council. And if you prefer a piece of paper for that resolution uh, versus having it in, recorded in the minutes, uh, be glad to draft something.
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilman Harry.
The CDBG grant, that's a grant program, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, we apply for grants to get money to spend in the, in the community. So I'm, I'm just trying to get, I mean, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on this. This is a grant program that we're saying we want to participate in. So I think we should have some official documents. So that's just my, that's what we've done for the last thirty, twenty years, um.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. And, and the only, the difference in opinion here is I think our minutes is an official document. What we do here, we type up and we put posts uh, for public uh, consumption and it goes, it's part of permanent record. So, you know, y- your desires for it to be in the form of resolution. And, and my opinion is that it's, it's, it is documented in our minutes when we vote on it. Uh, so I think the, the desire for it to be documented is the same, just the vehicles by, you know, which we would recognize as a, that documentation just differs. I, is there a second to, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, a- again, council has my opinion. I don't necessarily think that, you know, it requires a resolution, but it doesn't hurt. I mean, so it's.
Well, can I, can I add one thing? And that is uh, having written the CDBG grant applications for the last five years, uh, they do require a copy of a resolution authorizing each application. So, you will be doing that, you will be doing that for sure.
Look.
So it's up to you.
Yeah, it's, it's not, you know, that significant of a battle if you can just prepare that piece of resolution too. Yeah, and then, then we'll have subsequent resolutions before each thing, you know, it's not that big of a deal. So. All right. With that, uh, investment allocation, uh, council, council, city manager, Sabata?
Sure, um. The um, recommendation for Mr. Stewart and myself is that um, the um, funds that are currently in, in uh, the bank, the, the city's bank um, not earning interest be um, um, put into the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool, which is managed by PNC Bank. And the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool has been in existence uh, probably thirty years or so. They were in existence when I was city manager of Tacoma Park and I, through ninety-nine, from ninety-two to ninety-nine. And uh, they are an entity that is established by the state of Maryland that is uh, under the purview of the Maryland State Treasurer. So, uh, with uh, at uh, uh, our recommendation, we're suggesting that uh, council give a direction, give us permission to make arrangements to put uh, a, a substantial sum of money into the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool managed by PNC Bank. And Mr. Stewart may want to add something to that, um, if he wishes.
Yes, um, good night, everyone. So this investment fund has a caveat for it in the fact that the funds are liquid. Liquid in the sense that they are not fixed when you put them in the account. We, if needed, can pull those funds out um, on a, on a daily basis whenever we need it. I have sent an email to the council about it and um, just wanted to know if you have any questions on it. And um, and uh, would you give us uh? And um, and uh, would you give us uh your comments or something?
Any, any uh comments from council?
You have some comments. Okay, so we're gonna do a resolution on authorizing the move. How much?
The recommendation is ninety percent of the funds that are currently in uh Truist. City's bank.
How much?
So right now, as my understanding is eleven million dollars in uh, in the um Truist Bank, not earning interest.
Okay, and they said it's liquid, so when that money is moved back and forth. This council will be notified and we will be voting on moving this money back and forth, correct?
Absolutely, because there, as my understanding, there are uh only uh. Uh, the only folks who can sign documents related to that are people who sign um checks. So um, you can mandate in the resolution that uh. Well, Mr. Stewart does have signatory authority that requires uh, uh, you know, uh, a second. Or third, whatever you wanna do in terms of authorization for uh dealing with the liquidity, either. Putting money in or taking money out, if that helps.
Yeah, I just wanna be sure that full council knows that money is being moved back and forth between that account. I mean, I don't care if it's ten dollars. We should know what's being put in and out of our accounts. So I mean, I understand the silence had, silence have to, okay. But again, this is a body of seven people and I wanna know what's going on with eleven million dollars and how it's moving back and forth. And why it's moving back and forth if it's moving back and forth. I just wanna make sure that it's, that it's on record that. We know that this council knows what's happening with the money with the city's tax dollar, the citizens' tax dollars, and they need to know what's going on with their money that is moving back and forth. And for what purposes moving back and forth?
Understood.
Um, any other counsel? I'm sorry, Councilman Jones?
Yes, uh, so this isn't operating monies, is it? This is just um savings monies that we're trying to build um. Interest on?
Uh, thi- this is, these are funds that um, it's a combination of city funds as well as. The funds that the city received from the US Treasury for ARPA.
So this is the reserves?
This is reserves and this is the ARPA money, yes.
Okay, and between the reserves and the ARPA money, there's eleven million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, but that's not it, this is not our operating expense budget. This is. Uh, savings.
Well, uh, I mean, we'll, uh, Mr. Uh, yeah, Mr. Stewart had referenced that, you know, we have to maintain liquidity. Which is why he's saying only move ninety percent of the funds, and if we needed to pull some out. Uh, be, you know, before uh a certain period of time, you know, when, when we need the liquidity that, that he would certainly. Want to do that, have the flexibility to do that. So, so in, in other words, if we uh, if one of the ARPA funds uh takes off in terms of a lot of applicants. And we need to pull money out, then we're gonna need to pull that, those funds out of the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool in order to keep uh. Keep up with the pace of folks who are applying and, and uh getting approval for whichever fund.
Okay, and so.
As active.
Okay, so and they're telling you that there's no penalty when you uh decide to do a withdrawal?
Uh, Dean, you wanna take that one?
Yes, yes, and, and yes, that, as I said, which is a caveat, which is why I like this, this um investment pool. Is that there are no, no penalty, nothing of the sort. Um, it's. And it's total earnings, I mean, at the end of the day. Whatever they're charging us will be netted out of what we are earning. And um, we're net, we're earning net of four point nine five percent. Which is very competitive during this time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I will, yeah, oh, let me, let me um make comment, then I'll come back to you, Council, I mean, Herron. Uh, the only comment that I'll make is that I just say ninety thousand, ninety thousand, ninety percent is probably too much. Uh, especially if we're looking to do things to move back and forth via resolution. Um, I think that uh it'll probably safer to say that the ARPA money. Uh, at least the plans that we have with ARPA money should stay in uh the current. A- account, uh, and then we could remove, we can transfer the surplus. Uh, that we don't have any plans for that have remained untouched to that account to, to draw interest. I would just hate to have to keep on doing resolutions to pull things in and out when. It's already in the account that we're gonna be actively using. And I think that now that we're gonna have these guidelines in place for. Uh, what um council members have worked hard on for uh these initiatives that we have. That we just need to remain balanced. Uh, and liquid to be able to fund these um initiatives. Councilman Herron?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo what you said. I think it should be reversed. I think a smaller percentage should be in the, in the investment account and a larger percentage should be in operating cuz we're gonna blow that down. Especially if we start doing big projects. I just wanna make it quite clear to the citizens that, no, it's not savings. Basically, that money, that's money that. That's money that's been sitting in our bank account for capital projects that haven't got done over the years. That's what that eleven million dollars consists of. Over the years, we put money in the bank and put money in the budget for major project, street paving and other things. And it wasn't used. And so now we're sitting here with eleven million dollars. Four million dollars of it is off, so you're talking seven million dollars. But I still agree with you that it should be reversed. We shouldn't, I mean, put no ninety percent in that fund. When we're gonna be using it. And definitely should be that, definitely have operating expenses in a, in a, in a bank account. At a hefty, at a hefty amount, so. Yeah, that, that, that's not large for ninety percent and ten percent in operating. That's it, thanks.
So, if I could, um, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Yes, council, uh, council, uh, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, so what we're looking at here is opportunity cost. And opportunity cost is what we're losing as we keep having this um higher amount of. Funds in an account that is not earning anything. Um, I, I cannot overstress the fact that these. Houses have no charges with regard to um getting back funds in their account. And when we ask for um funds to be put back into the current account. I think I gave you a schedule to say that within a day we could get that funds back into their account. Um. I really think it's, it's prudent for us to consider. Using most of the funds to, to earn more. Um, there's no restrictions here. And I think i- it's the best way to go, based on the information that we have. I mean, the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool is a triple A. Um, rated standard, rated by standards and ports. Uh, the, this is, this is a solid um organization that can provide. Um. Good, safe investment, um, opportunity for our funds. But I leave it to the, the, the council to make that decision. But I believe up to ninety percent would be the best option, given that we are considering opportunity cost. We're losing a whole lot of money, just by having the money in current account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I'll leave it to the, the will of the council. Um, I know Councilman Herring uh had raised the point of having a re. Uh, I don't know, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Herring, of having a resolution where we move things back and forth. From the account, was that what you said, Councilman Herron?
Yeah, I mean, if you move millions of dollars back and forth, something should be, something should be in writing. Council need to know, and this council's complete financial responsibility over the funds in this, in this um community. It isn't just a unilateral thing, okay, I decide I'm, somebody wanna move money and we don't have no say in it. I'm just moving the money.
I do have a question for you, Councilman Herron, so. He, the, they can't spend it. Um, so they can only spend what's been appropriated by the council. Their request is only that the city earns, has the opportunity to make money. On the money by just sitting in a ca- in, in an account. And whenever we need to use the money, then it's transferred to our operating account at no cost. Um, to pay for our bills, which allows us to make more money. Uh, which will be reported on monthly uh by the treasurer's report on the interest that we've earned. In those interests, in that interest-bearing account. So the council will get a, a full report. Um, on the finances of the city. So is, is that not robust enough?
No, I wanna know when it's being moved. I wanna know when the money is being moved out. I wanna know that is being moved out. I wanna know why it's being moved out. I wanna know why we have to keep on moving money in and out if, if things are being done. The way it needs to be done. I mean. I mean, I've never seen an organization move all their funds into an investment account and then stop pulling money out when you need it. I've seen them move a little bit into your investment for, uh, but investment account, and then you would just. You know, have something operating cuz you never know what's gonna come up in operating. You mean, whether we get penalized or not, at least we'll know where the money is sitting there and we gotta come and meet and decide. And discuss why this money's being moved in. Cuz what's gonna happen is it's gonna be emails flying back and forth and it's gonna constitute a meeting. Because the council should know, every council, and if, if this council is not worried about money being moved back and forth between accounts, we have a major problem. That's a major issue. Because we are responsible for these, the city's tax dollars, no matter how, how little it moves or how much it moves. But to sit here and say, okay, well, he's gonna give us a photo kind after they do everything they need to do. Nah, I don't, I don't flow like that, that, that ain't me. I'm, I'm worried, I'm worried about the city's tax dollars. I mean, so we, we getting what we need to be getting from them and that they're moving the way they need to move and they're being used what they need to be used for, not just. You know, okay, we got this and we're gonna just do this when um. We're gonna do this and now we can work on this and we gonna work on this now till we, I move money for this and I move it back to this and all this back and forth. Nah, I'm, I'm, I don't fool around people's money. I don't fool around, fool around the city's money, the citizens' money like that. But, you know, I'm only one person, so, you know, and I said eight oh two, eight oh two of the charter. Eight oh two H, you know, gives the council complete authority over the finances when it comes down to the financial affairs of the city. So it says the council, not, not, it's the city. In, 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 you know, I mean, we wanna absolve ourselves of any responsibility, we changing the charter, we can take that out and just leave it all to one person. You know, so. Yeah, I'm just saying, I, me as a council person, been sitting in the seat a long time and watched funds go here, go there, go everywhere. Next thing you know, you know, you're wondering what happened. Not saying that's gonna happen, but my thing is all these people are not gonna still be in this position. Who knows, five, ten, fifteen years down the road, they may move on to something else. You got somebody else up in here. And you opening a Pandora's box when you do stuff like that. We gotta be very vigilant about the finances in this community. We're a small community, one thing like that, and it would destroy us. Something go wrong, it'll destroy us. So, yeah, I wanna know what's going on. I wanna know what's going on with the city's citizens' tax dollars. And the citizens have a right to know what's going on with their tax dollars. They need to know their money being bounced back and forth. But there's eleven million dollars out there. I don't know, we don't own this, we don't own this, we don't own this money, it's theirs. But we, but we start spending it like we, like it's ours and we just do what we want with it. All right, I'm, I'm done, thanks, cuz it's ten o'clock and I'm ready to get up off of here. It's hurt everything, all right, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Herron. To say another comment on this, uh, Miss Tabata, are you looking for, what are you looking for? A consensus to move?
Uh, yeah, I, I thi- I think if uh council wants to uh structure it so that there is a comfort level. In terms of having a process where those who are the signers uh, uh, in, involved in this are uh. You know, um, consulting with their colleagues before money is moved in or out. It, can there be a structure uh in, internal to the council process? So that uh this can uh, you know, happen without um needing uh, you know. A full hearing at, at a meeting, as you said, that there are the, there are the uh. The financial statements and certainly, um, you know, my, my experience has been that. Um, you know, treasurers uh will recommend based on what they see in terms of cash flow needs. So, um, tha- that can certainly come from Mr. Stewart. A recommendation on uh, you know, you, usually uh, you know, uh, what may happen is. Uh, prior to the taxes coming in in September, there might be some cash flow needs that you need to pull some money out. Uh, kind of thing, so um. You know, I think that could be a, a further discussion uh for this uh moving these funds. Uh, we would like to have a decision on. Uh, you know, if it's not ninety percent, is it seventy-five percent, you know, just taking out the res- reserve amount. And putting it in the uh fund, a Maryland Local Government Investment Pool, and whether or not you want that in. Resolution form or, or what, um, or a vote by the council uh in the minutes. Um, I realize this has not been a process that, that you've had to deal with. You have the rich, rich uh experience of having eleven million dollars in your account. Uh, the thing that's startling is that you're not earning any interest on it, and you need to correct that.
I agree. So I make a motion that we move seventy percent to the, to the uh. To the new account and leave thirty in our operating account. Um, I just give you a heads up, I'd likely um be recommended that we form a finance committee. Within the um council. So that the treasurer can update the finance committee and the finance committee can update the entire council. Um, but that's something separate. Right now, just consensus on moving seventy percent to the. The interest-bearing account and leaving thirty percent. Um, Councilman Jones?
Yes.
One of the board, Mr. President, you cannot vote in a work session.
Not voting, it's consensus.
Consensus to move, you cannot give a consensus to move, uh, what, nine million dollars?
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not asking. I'm not asking for council to permission to give Mr. Stewart uh permission tomorrow to do this. We'll do it. And put it in front of you in your public session and then your vote on the nineteenth, twentieth, rather.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Well, if you, if, yeah, that's fine, that's whatever.
It's just, it's just permission to move forward to, so that they can prepare the paperwork and. Because there's no need for them to do it if we're just gonna shoot it down.
Me, I have no problem doing it. I just, I'm just not saying moving all that money over. I'm okay with, you know, I'm to the point.
No, they, they will have to draw up the paperwork and, and we'll have to. Do an official vote correctness about it.
Yes.
On the twentieth. So this is just to give them to get, go ahead to, to do all that work, to get all that paperwork together. So, anybody else? All right, Councilman Jones would say yes, uh, uh, Councilman Herron, since you're unmuted.
I have same.
Councilman Hairston?
So man, y'all say it so much, I don't even know where we at yet. I mean, it's eleven o'clock, guy, and I said like ninety-nine different things, boy. I thought somebody said something in Spanish and I ain't fluent. Um, what we doing?
Oh, uh, they're just getting, we have eleven million dollars that's sitting, not making any money in our operating account. The administration wants to be able to move some funds to an interest-bearing account so that. The money that we have can actually be making money while it's just sitting there. And so they wanna get uh a consensus from us to move forward with filling out the paperwork to move. Uh, for us to vote on, for us to, for them to move the money to an interest-bearing account.
So this, this is not a yes, so they can do it? This is just a yes to draw paperwork up?
Correct, this is not a, this is not them, a yes to them signing, you know, papers and getting us into an agreement or anything. It's just. Green light for them to move forward.
I see.
Thank you. Um. With it, Herron, and Councilman Gill.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And my vote is yes. All right, there we go. Um. Any questions? Uh, everyone, all the council members have the administrative reports ahead of time. Um, I know that historically we've had two opportunities to. To voice any questions here on the regular session. Are there any questions on administrative reports that were provided for the council? All right. Here and none. Councilwoman Fareed, you have the only uh topic of discussion.
Yeah. I, I, I would like to, I should just talk about it another time, just too late. I, I, I would like to first just talk about it another time, just too late.
Counselor, I had my hand up when you said.
Sorry, I did. I apologize, I did not see you. Council Miguel?
It's okay. I just wanted to um make a comment to um the mayor. That if she can, whether it's during the public meeting or during the regular session, that she um. Provides some clarity as to the tablets, because there have been a lot of calls and. You know, communications around that, so if she can publicly address that as far as bringing forth clarity to what that program is, that would help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gion.
Uh, Mister Curtis?
Count, uh, yeah, Miss Tabata?
Yeah, um, just one thing, um, as a result of the Red Speed Camera presentation, uh. You know, at either at the public hearing or whenever, we need direction as to whether or not we're gonna, you're gonna want to do anything with that. Didn't want to be presumptuous and present a resolution tonight until you heard what they had to offer, so just to put that on the table. At some point.
Yeah, I, I would say move forward with the resolution and council members can, could do a little bit more research. Uh, I think Mister Lanier is gonna be around for a week, so if council members have any questions. I encourage council members to reach out to Miss Tabata and Chief uh Bryant. Uh, to, to meet with Mister Lanier and then council members upon uh. The, not the public hearing, but the regular uh meeting on June the twentieth. Can vote yes or no on the Red Speed Cameras.
Thank you.
Um. And we're tabling the Charter Amendment Resolution to uh. The, that Councilwoman Fareed wanted to talk about as a topic of discussion. Uh, and so I'll just go quickly to uh Mayor Cross as it relates to um. Uh, the tablets. Mayor Cross?
Super. Hey, thanks a lot uh for asking that question, Councilwoman Gion. Uh, the key thing about the tablets is we need to make sure that we get access to those that need it. So far, we've only had five people turn in their names, but this is available under the um. American Advancement for Broadband. Uh, recipients will receive five to ten gigabytes of data. Uh, the providers actually are the coverage of um T-Mobile, AT&amp;T as well. Uh, the coverage area will be able to uh be utilized for the internet, for the whole house. So, and it actually comes with a hotspot. So in households where there isn't a regular desktop or a regular laptop. This includes our seniors and our veterans and folks that don't have a regular school-aged child. Uh, this hotspot can actually be used for the entire household. Um, we have two providers who have come uh to me and asked if there were uh persons that are in need. Of this, you can only have one per household. They are at no cost to the citizens. And the data plans are an installed SIM card, so it qualifies throughout the entire United States of America. So you can take this internet tablet anywhere in America and it will work. The interesting thing about it is that it is a part of the ACP program. And that program uh goes from president to president. So in twenty twenty uh five, uh, when we get ready to get ourselves ready for, you know, elections and such. Uh, twenty twenty-six, if a new president is elected or President Biden comes in, then you'll know that it goes uh president to president. But at all costs, the internet tablets are the families to keep. They do not take them back, you own them. Uh, they are at no cost to the requister. Uh, this is a federal-funded program. It is set up and it will continue over the next four years as a minimum. And we um are gonna be working with all the schools, uh, colleges are being worked with. And also, we're looking at working with our American Legions and working with the city is the number one thing. And also our Glen Arden uh Hills. So we are looking at making sure that anyone, everyone that needs access to broadband. And getting onto the internet will have this access. You need only provide the baseline information, your name, your address. And your phone number so that we can do an immediate assessment by within through uh the company's. Public Wireless is one of the companies that we'll be utilizing. Uh, these come with um a thirty-two gigabyte ROM. Uh, it has multi-language capability, they're ten inches in size, and again, there's a lot more crap um. Characteristics, but it does come with a rugged case included, and it does have its hotspot. So what we are trying to do is ensure that particularly in this world, it's transitioning so fast into the technological realm. That there isn't a household in the city of Glen Arden that wants to have access. That does have the ability right now under this program at no cost to them. They just need to only ask. Um, so the providers are standing by. We'll get our list together. I will send the list forward, just send it to Jordan McLong, City of Glen Arden. Jay McLong at cityofglenarden.org, your name, address and phone number. And we'll compile the list and we'll get the list over, and uh it usually will come right to. Um, I will ask that it goes right to the resident's home, so there isn't any third-party transaction. When they arrive, they have to be used once per month. If you don't use them, then there is a phone number. That you can call the service to get it reactivated. Uh, long story short, that's the, that's the product.
I think it'll probably be special if we can post it somewhere. Uh, cause I know you started off saying Jay McClung, but some people don't know how to. May not know how his name is spelled, so if we could post it, uh, is it posted on the, the website?
Uh, I put it in my last report, but we can definitely build a flyer, which will make it easier and put it on the scroll for the website. Uh, we can do that, no problem.
Yeah, and if you could just spell out who, you know, the email that citizens should, should email, all the requirements. Whether it, their name, their address, the phone number, whatever's required for um you guys to move it forward to the next step. Uh, and then we can follow up once we have that list with expectations of when um citizens should be able to hear back from. Um. Us or the government or the federal government or wherever the tablets will cover from.
Absolutely. Six to, usually it's about six weeks uh from the time that you're qualified. To get the tablet, because it would be coming directly to the homeowner or the resident. So that's one of the, that's a known within six weeks, so about a month and a half. But ultimately, we want to get as many names in now. Um, then again, by the start of school. Uh, which starts in September, they'll have them, the hotspots will be there for our kids. And for our transitional youth as well, and for our seniors. And then we can come back uh in the fall and everybody will be broadband ready.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, uh, council members, I know you're not gonna like me much, but there's still one item left. Um. And that is the, the vote for council president and vice president. Um, I, you know. Don't necessarily want to kick this can down the road, so if you could just spare. You know, a few more minutes, uh, then we can do that and then we can adjourn. Um. With that. Uh, the council deserves to go to write into closed session anytime during a public meeting. Uh, pursuant to Antae Code of Maryland State Government, Article ten dash five hundred and eight A, the council. By majority vote, may retire to executive for a closed session anytime during the meeting. Should the council retire to executive for a closed session, the chair will announce the reasons and a report be issued at a future meeting. Disclose the reasons for such closed session, and this closed session is to vote for again, um. The upcoming uh president and vice president for FY twenty-four. Is there a motion to go into closed session? I motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilwoman Jones?
Councilwoman Jones?
Okay.
All right. Uh. Any discussion? All right, Councilman Jones? Yeah or no?
Yes.
Council Miguel?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston?
Yes.
Councilman Herring?
Same.
Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes.
And Vice President Ferguson?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. With that, the open portion of this meeting is now closed. Thank you. Citizens for coming out to watch our work session. Uh, we will be back in session on Wednesday for the budget. Thank you.